Vehicle leasing and maintenance program. On that, during the budget workshops, y'all have asked to add a couple more vehicles to that to relieve some of the decision packages. They've reworked some of the numbers and they've included that in a new update that we just handed out. Plus, they're going to get up here and explain a little bit more in detail about what costs are associated with it. One of the costs that I didn't realize was involved in that price was the maintenance of those vehicles during that time of the lease. So, they're going to get up here and explain that. Billy's going to do a little talking. He doesn't trust Tyler yet, and Tyler's going to do the little clicking.
Thank you all for your time again. Does it go right? Okay. So, I'll skip through some of these last parts because we reviewed it.
If you would, sir, just state your name for the record.
Yep, Billy Backus with Enterprise Fleet Management.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. So, we'll skip past some of these from last time. And we'll start here. So, just to recap, this is, was from your last report they had for fleet-related expenses. And so, on the capital replacement fund, that's how much money was allocated towards the vehicles in the different departments. Down the bottom left, significant budget items, outside vehicle repairs, fuel, parts, and then personnel expenditures related to the Fleet Services Division. One thing to point out real quick, because this came up as a question last time, is how exactly would you manage the outside repairs if you were to go through our maintenance program? And it's not something we pointed out right in the beginning, but there is already maintenance being done at outside facilities. So, as that last report, there's about 150,000. And so, it's not a huge change from what you're doing because you already have a program like that in place. So, we'll touch on a little bit more about what that program looks like with us, which is a few key things I want to point out. So, what we did was look at what you did for that last year for a number of vehicles replaced, and we broke it up in the non-police department and police vehicles. So, what you see in the blue chart up there is there is 11 total that were replaced. And because you all paid cash for your vehicles, it was $604,000 was the capital expenditures to replace those. So, what we did between the last meeting and now is we met individually with all the different departments, reviewed the vehicles that were on the list, tried to figure out the ones that were missing, had the ones that were supposed to be there. And then, we did some right typing and right sizing to making sure that the vehicle usage matches up with what they need. And so, we finalized that number. And so, what we're looking at for replacement in the first year is 13 vehicles that are in all of the other departments. And then, there's 12 that are specific to the police vehicles. And so, the first year annual outlay is about 322,000. And if you compare that to what you did the year before, you got 11 vehicles for over 600. Now, we're able to more than double that for about a little under $300,000 less. So, this is exactly what we meant by when you need to get on that right vehicle replacement, but not have this substantial capital outlay to replace them. This will help you get on the right vehicle life cycle, capitalize on resale, and significantly lower the operating costs in regards to maintenance and fuel for the vehicles as well. And this is just a sample chart of what the maintenance looks like. It's up and down year over year, but over time, we know that it continues to increase. Again, just pulling from your reports that you put out, you can see from your city internally, the maintenance, repairs, and services have continued to go up from 2014 to 2017. So, you've almost doubled the amount of repairs that you've done. Preventive maintenance has gone up a little bit as well. And again, there's a lot of money being spent at outside repair facilities. So, what we're able to do with our maintenance program is allow you to continue to go to maintenance facilities within the city limits. But, we're going to have a management perspective to oversee everything that gets done. So, nothing can get done on the vehicle until it's approved by our National Service Department. And we even put in other parameters, like anything over $1,000. After we make sure everything needs to be on that list is right, we'll then make sure we get further approval internally from the city to make sure that this is something you want to do. If it's a significant repair, it's a good opportunity to possibly not fix it and sell it, or we'll give you all those different options so you can decide what's best for the city. This maintenance program too, for all new vehicles, allows you to have a fixed budget amount, which you'll find on page five of the handout. And it allows you to budget for the amount of years that the vehicle's going to be held for. So, you don't have to worry about any surprise repairs or anything else that's done. And then, by cycling the vehicles too, you're going to capitalize on the new fuel economy of the vehicles. You can see that over the past 20 years, on that Ford F-150, there's been a 50% increase in fuel economy. So, with your average age of the fleet being 15 years old, you're going to see a lot more fuel-efficient vehicles, which is going to lower your carbon footprint and put a lot more cost savings back into the city. Not as drastic, but still a good increase on the sedan side as well, going from 20 to 27 miles per gallon over the past 20 years. Again, that's a 35% improvement. So, with fuel degradation and not capitalizing on a new fuel economy, that's where you see the cost of fuel impacting the city every single year that you hold on to vehicles. So, we'll continue to analyze your fleet and look at where we can reduce your costs. And since fuel is your number one operating cost, this is going to be a big area of opportunity moving forward. Being able to use a fuel card, get away from an onsite fuel tank will allow the city employees to fuel up locally within the city limits at any fuel station that they want. And it allows more visibility, allows more tracking for who's filling up, when, how much fuel they're putting in, what types. And we can capture that data on a per-vehicle basis. Again, so we can use that information to run our analysis and help reduce your total cost of ownership. So, we're looking at the three main cost components, which fuel and maintenance, we know goes up over time. And when you start to shorten that cycle, that's where you can capitalize on the resale value. The other big impact of cycling is going to be the safety of the vehicles. So, again, looking at your numbers specifically, you see some key years of when certain safety standards became a standard on vehicles or even started being tested on vehicles. And in 2007, things like front and side crash tests, anti-lock brakes, airbags. You have 57 vehicles that are older than 2007. Then, 2012, an electronics stability control and these other features came. There's 110 vehicles that are that age or older. So, it doesn't seem like much of a difference, but here's a snapshot from the National Highway Institute. This is just a one-year difference in a mile a year of an F-150. So, from 2015 to 2016. And this is how important, this is how much of a priority is for all of our clients in the government sector and other ones, about the safety of the vehicles that their employees are in. So, when they're driving around, your average age of your fleet is 15 years old. And you're holding on to vehicles for a long time, there's a lot of features on that vehicle that just didn't even exist back then that you can get by cycling at the right time. Again, with our program, comes with a local accounting. So, you have an account manager that means to do three to four times a year. The good part about the maintenance and fuel programs is they're allowed to keep tracking and managing the data that exists with owning and operating the fleet of vehicles and continuing to make recommendations on what should be replaced. They're also going to look at future vehicles. So, if you're going to replace a certain type of pickup truck or sedan or any other type, they'll be able to analyze all manufacturers and all holding periods to recommend what's the lowest total cost of ownership. And then, something that's going to be of a lot of value today, the fleet costs and the fleet vehicles are kind of tracked in all different places. You know, whether it's paper or Excel, they're all different areas. This will allow you to have the entire fleet under one single online management system. So, you'll be able to see every vehicle in every department, what the costs are, who the drivers are. Everything's going to be in one online dashboard. So, whether it's department heads or anybody in the city is going to have access to this, whoever wants access to it. And they'll be able to see the cost at a real-time day. So, if we've got maintenance that day, you'll be able to see it's uploaded that day, fuel costs, everything else. And again, this is how we're tracking costs, holding costs per vehicle. And then, for any city employee that's driving the vehicles, they'll have access to this mobile app, which allows them to find the closest maintenance facility, the closest fuel station. It's all their contact information if there's any troubles with the vehicles. Comes with 24/7 roadside assistance. Everything that they need is on this mobile app to help them just be more efficient using the vehicles. And year over year, we're going to do an annual client review. Because the good part about a fleet, it's all data, it's all numbers. So, we can show our clients year over year where the cost savings are, from a cash flow perspective, from a reduction in operating costs, from an increase in the amount of resale we get for the vehicles. Everything's documented, and it's a great report card for us. And it's a great way to see how much money you're saving year over year and where there's additional opportunities. So, I can pause right here and open up if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for, uh, I didn't get your last name. You said Billy?
Backus.
Okay, Backus, okay.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Fowler, you have a question for Mr. Backus?
Well, one for Mr. Backus. Can you go back to the slide where it's the point of contact for the city? Three or four slides. There you go.
Yep.
Um, this is more for staff. Mr. Manager, what, how, if they have a mobile app, how do we, how are we able to, or what's y'all's thought on how we would be able to control who serves, who moves out of vehicle for service? Is there, y'all, how will that work?
Cody, is that going to be like, are we going to keep the current system in place to do that? Or are we going to change up the notification process? Yeah.
Because they'll, for preventative maintenance, they'll send a notification about when things are due for service or something like that, and they try to make it more efficient. So, you know that vehicle isn't needed that day that you can take it in for service. My whole goal is to make sure that the services are being performed in Halton City shops and keep, kind of keep that money within Halton City and develop a relationship with the shops so we can make that stuff a little bit quicker.
But if something goes down, I mean, it's, it's, you know, Mr. Backus, you said, you know, you have a mobile app. But, so it would, the, the department head, say Parks Department would report it to their supervisor that there's a, there's an issue with the vehicle, and then they would say, you know, get, go through that, that? Or would it go through the shop like where it used to be?
For permission? No, it wouldn't go through the shop. They would take it to the service station or wherever they were getting the service performed. Any, any of the conversations between the service department and Enterprise about what needs to be repaired or anything between those two?
Okay, so that would go through, through Enterprise?
Correct.
Okay, and then, so, y'all, so we would make that determination on PMs and all that? And then, it would go to y'all to be, to determine? And y'all would do all the uploading of all the information to keep track of that vehicle on what's been done in the service? Is that done through the shop, through our, our shop? Or do we have to, do we run that through y'all? Do y'all stay in contact with the vendor?
So, we, we stay in contact with the vendor. And all that data is uploaded directly from the vendor to us. And we put it right up to the website in that real time.
Okay.
Yep. And so, we try to do it a couple of weeks out for when vehicles need service. So, best practices, someone logs in just in the beginning of the month and you see, okay, these five vehicles need to go in for oil change this month. So, it gives you enough time to, for a department head to send out who's adds those vehicles so they can bring them into the shop.
Okay. And then, we still are, it's our intent to retain a couple of people to do PMs for heavy equipment and the other things that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Let's see here. Councilmember None.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions, and then I'm a little confused on something. And I guess this is to, um, Mr. Lang. What are we using now? Are we using like an RTW software program to keep up with our vehicles now?
Uh, I'm not sure what Brian was using, what kind of program.
I don't remember the program name offhand, but it's an antiquated program.
It does basically the same thing. And it, it, it tells you when your PMIs are, it tells you what you've ordered, how much you've ordered, when it was ordered.
Correct.
That kind of thing. So, it keeps up your inventory, plus it also.
It's extremely inefficient.
Yes.
Absolutely.
It's inefficient or efficient?
Inefficient. There's multiple programs and tabs and all that stuff that you have to go through, so.
Well, we use that at the airport, for, for all of our different maintenance, for, for the entire airport vehicles. So, that's the only one I'm, I'm familiar with. But, um, I was wondering if this is similar? As to what you're using now, if this is similar to an RTW? Evidently, it's more efficient.
Yeah, so this, this is something we built from the ground up. And really integrated a lot of systems to make it that, for different time, information, user-friendly. But, it does a lot of similar things to the program you have. It's just, it's a lot more easier. We can break it down per department. There's a lot of features that you can customize. And there's not any extra fee for it. It's all built into the partnership. So, it'll check all the vehicles from day one once we upload them to the system.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And also, have, I think you said that you can tell which driver's driving each vehicle. How do you do that? Do you have a keypad, like a smart drive in the, in each vehicle or?
For drivers that are assigned vehicles, which for the most part they are, we just upload that to our system. So, you know, this is the vehicle, this is the assigned driver, and that's how you can track the information.
Okay. So, so on the police cars, each, each policeman has his own car?
If they're up, they're assigned vehicles for patrol.
And they're, okay. So, every day it's the same?
If they're up for driving, yes.
Okay, all right. If it's their scheduled day?
Yeah, and vehicles up, yes.
Okay, all right. But as far as the trucks and everything for public works, that would be, are they usually, Greg, are they usually assigned their own vehicle?
Supervisors and crew leaders are, but underneath that, the crews will go out in a quad cab pickup or something like that. So, you may have one of four of those individuals being the driver.
So, they just pick it from the lot or?
No, Water and Sewer Division will have their own, I say fleet, it's probably just a couple of pickups, as well drainage maintenance and the street division. Some divisions, for instance, I don't believe Water and Sewer does have a quad cab pickup because they'll have, one will go out on a site with a dump truck with a backhoe towing behind it, so they don't need the quad cab. So, but again, supervisors and crew leaders, they're assigned to specific vehicles.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I didn't know how that worked. And then, on page five, as far as the vehicles that are on here. As far as the vehicles that are on here, are these, I, I can't really I don't understand it. On the left-hand page, number four, we have, I guess, our um, our public works vehicles for the most part, and, and it looks like maybe our um, uh oh, the smaller vans that we use to IT and, and uh, parks and rec. But on, but then we have our patrol cars up here. Are these just the ones that need to be? Um, these are the only ones that need to be replaced, that are on number five? Okay.
Yeah, and so that, that number went down a little bit from the first meeting we went to, just cause some vehicles were already replaced and so once we fine-tuned it, the number came out to be a little bit smaller. Uh, but that's how we broke it up, is all the police vehicles are up top and all the other departments are down below.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Clarification, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember None. Uh, Councilmember, or Dr. Trong?
Hey, ma'am. Uh, I'm confused about a fuel car. Is that officer or employee allowed to get the gas from any station in Halton City, or I have to go outside?
No, it's um, it's accepted at, I think it's around ninety percent of all fuel stations, so pretty much if it accepts a plastic credit card, it will accept this card. But the, every employee will have a specific PIN number. And so you can't fuel up unless you're entering in the PIN number and the odometer of the vehicle.
Yeah. And uh, Ms. Lynn, uh, are we limit our employee just use the gas in Halton City, right? Not go outside like they go lunch, not rest in here and pump the gas over?
Yes, sir, they'd be filling up in Halton City unless they were traveling, like for training or something.
And uh, you may be already mentioned about this, but let I ask you about, because we have many different type of vehicle in our city. You just service, the pickup, and the police car, right? Not a big truck or something like that, no?
So the, it's everything
Like, like the, you know, like, the big windows, uh, something like that, you're not serviced, right?
Yeah, not the large equipment or those types of vehicles.
Yes. And you monitor from A to Z on maintenance, repair, and everything, and you report to, uh, staff, right?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trong. Uh, Councilmember Grow?
Um, when it comes time to replace the vehicle, I guess you guys handle all the sales, you know, taking it and taking it to auction or whatever you have to do to take the vehicle out of the fleet?
Yes.
Okay, so you're responsible for all that and we don't have to do any of that?
Yep. And so we, it's actually only fifteen percent of vehicles go to auction. Everything else, we hand sell to local dealerships, um, online, wherever we can get the highest profit for our clients.
Okay.
That's where we sell it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow. Uh, and you said you had more in your presentation?
No, no, everything else was recap from last time, so, yep.
Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
One last question, Mr. Backus. On, say our patrol units, that's one thing that we've tried to you know, we're trying to keep the fleet updated as much as possible. What is the, you know, of course it changes all the time with newer vehicles, they're able to last longer, but um, part of the thing is, you know, the, the runtime, the idle time and all that, but what is, do y'all have, how do you how are you able to monitor that? Is it more, is it more on runtime, or is it more on mileage, or, you know, the the situation we have is there's, there's not as much buying the vehicle as just outfitting them and, and making sure they're to where they need to be. We talked about this last time a little bit on the specialty equipment and all that's needed.
Yep.
Um, wh- what's your criteria for a replacement of one?
There, there is no cookie cutter approach to that, especially with the police vehicles. So I can tell you from experience, it's usually about a three to five-year window. And we start to look at that every single year and see if it's the right time for the vehicle to get replaced. If it doesn't make sense at three or four years, it might be five, it might even be six. Um, some other factors that could change that is how's the, the resale market doing in, in the environment for that year? We'll also look at if there's body types that are changing. So we know, um, we spoke to GM recently and they said we have at least two years left of the Tahoe body style. So we know for at least the next two years, we can rotate those vehicles out. If there's any aftermarket equipment that we can transfer, we wanna do as much as possible to save costs. So if three years from now, we know that body style's gonna change, we might replace vehicles a little bit sooner, so you could save a lot of costs on the aftermarket upfitting. So that's why different things in the environment or what's going on with the manufacturers, that can alter what our recommendations are gonna be. But still, at the end of the day, um, they're your vehicles, you decide if you wanna replace them or not. We're just there to make the recommendations and provide the data to do so.
Well, and the reason I ask is like, the, the second vehicle down is a twenty thirteen Chevy Tahoe and it's showing current odometer one hundred and twenty-six thousand seven. What would, what would trigger that to be replaced? Is it, was it just from an evaluation that y'all did on it, or was it?
Yeah, that was part two from meeting with all the different departments. Um, from the very beginning like this, we don't have a great feel on your fleet. You guys are a lot more hands-on at this point. And so we look at um, the different vehicles and the mileage and kinda earmark what we would replace. But then especially through this process now, we see if some has a little bit more wear and tear, a little more damage, or maybe it is a little more idle time. And so it's, it's more of kind of a working back and forth on, here's what really needs to be replaced. We know big repairs are coming, things like that, so um, this was a mixture of our recommendations and also coming from the department.
Well, and that's where having, like you say, that's where having the data, the history on that vehicle would make a big difference, cause if it's wrecked or previously wrecked or something, it would make sense to roll it out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any more questions from the council for Mr. Backus? I have a question. Assuming this, the council wants to uh, proceed with this, what would be the next, the next step?
So the next step is since we have most of the vehicles laid out, um, we would start to place those orders with the manufacturers. Um, get you established with your account team, get all the vehicles uploaded to the website and get everything up and running. Um, and then we would actually start to begin the process of looking at what vehicles will be replaced for the following year. So we like to be as proactive as possible and, and get those in place. Um, so after this, it would be, you know, getting all the paperwork established. Um, getting the account activated, the meeting with the account team, and then start to move forward with the implementation phase.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Backus. Uh, Chief Phillips, did you have anything that you wanted to add, uh, to the presentation?
Now, the only thing, just to piggyback up what you were saying about idle time and all that, is that, that vehicle with a hundred and twenty-six, we looked at the vehicles and what repairs and monetary value, we've already got dedicated to that unit and knowing that it's gonna just continue to increase is why that some of those were taken in place at a higher priority than the other ones.
And thank you for that. I'm sure, you know, like Sam, I'm sure you went the great length to do that. I just, you know, you look at it and you look at a hundred and twenty-six thousand, do like say our police units, do we, are we able to have a, you know, a, a lot of vehicles have the engine hours on them digitally now?
Our garage actually has a device you can plug in the
And it tells you?
Yeah, and the OBD, I think, is important, and it actually tell you what the, the mileage is, and then compare the mileage versus the hours to show what your idle idle time is and what convert it to miles per hour.
Yeah, I mean, I knew there was something you could, you know, there's a way to do it, but that, that's probably more beneficial. You know, cause it, it, it just, it helps me, educate me on how we go through the process, so.
Thank you, Chief, and also Mr. Backus for your presentation. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, what direction do you need, was this more for information, or do you need a direction from the council for this?
Um, it was, it's for direction. I know the council's given us information before that they're interested in pursuing this, especially at the price savings. So if you still feel that way, then we'll just, we'll make it happen with Enterprise.
Okay, so you just need a kind of a general consensus from the council that they wanna proceed with this, or they wanna hold off on it, okay? So what would be the general consensus of the council regarding this, uh, this presentation and this, this uh, project? Uh, Councilmember Grow?
Um, I'm for it. I like consensus.
Okay. Councilmember Grow's for it. Uh, Dr. Trong?
I'm okay.
Brown, Watkins. So you have a general consensus from at least Dr. Trong, Councilmember Brown, Watkins, and Grow. Uh, we'd like to hear from Councilmembers None and uh, Fowler as well. Yes, ma'am?
Um, I'm for it. I mean, I, I definitely will, you know, if um, if Chief wants it, you know, is, is agrees that it's the way to go and, and Chief Lane, you know, I, I'm for it. I trust you guys that this is the best that you can, you know, what you wanna do. So I trust your judgment on this.
Fantastic, thank you, Ms. None. Uh, Councilmember Fowler, did you have any follow-up comments, or?
No, I, I just take a minute to thank uh, Manager Lane, uh, and Mr. Phelps, as well as Chief Phillips for uh, you know, bringing this forward. I think this is a good opportunity. You're gonna see more of the public, private, and we've we've worked hard in trying to figure out a way to be more efficient throughout, and you know, I do wanna thank you guys. I think y'all did a great job. Uh, you know, I think it's gonna be, it may be a little bit of a growing pain for, you know, a short period. I'm sure it'll be a headache for you, Chief, but uh, is that what caused it? But no, I do, I do wanna thank y'all for, for bringing it forth, and I think it, it, you know, and when it's implemented fully, I think it will be a good it will be a good uh, project or, or a good uh, opportunity for our citizens.
Absolutely. Well, there you go, Mr. City Manager. We're ready to move forward with this. So uh, moving on to work se- work, second work session item, fiscal year twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen budget.
Chief, Chief, can you advance that to past their slides? Yeah, Mayor, we uh we, uh, Councilmember Fowler had wanted to discuss the upcoming budgets more, so uh, we put that on the work session tonight. I just had one slide here to show you. We pulled a as you know, TAD gets out a lot of their information in late July and August, so we pulled a report last week. We talked a lot about in the last workshop about the exemptions that we give as a city on property taxes. Um I know Councilmember Brown had a lot of questions about what exactly we give. So when we find it. No, no, that's Jennifer's. She's right there, yeah, there you go. So this is a report. Lost it. This kinda breaks down the exemptions that we currently give um, as a city to taxpayers. The homestead exemption, that's a number that the city comes up with. Um, we give a ten percent homestead exemption, that's on all homesteaded properties, and you can see that far right-hand column, that represents fifty-seven percent of our residential properties. Um, get that ten percent homestead. And then we have the over sixty-five and the disabled. And then, of course, we've got um, numerous citizens whose property taxes are frozen. So um, that second to the, to the last column on the right, that kinda shows you the total tax reduction that we see um, by giving all these exemptions, so I know we talk a lot about property um, tax burden, but this is just a slide to kinda show you that we do give some exemptions there and um, that's kind of the, the tax reduction that we, we give our citizens following to those categories.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Dr. Trong, did you have a question regarding this?
Hi, uh, Super Chief.
Super Doctor.
Uh, among this one, uh, I remember last year we talked about somebody get used the sixty-five, over sixty-five, you know, like fifty percent off for tax. Even the uh, owner already passed away, and did you have any record? How many home doing this, and what can we do to uh, get back the regular property tax for the county and city?
Yeah, the, the only way to do that really is to research properties. Um, I know the only time that we've done that before is regards to rental properties. Um, it was, it was back when I was police chief and we were having some issues with some rental properties, so um, our crime-free multi-housing officer did a lot of research through TAD to make sure that if they were getting a homestead exemption, that they, that person actually still lived there. And we did find in a few cases that the owner had passed away and a family uh, the family was renting it out, so it really didn't qualify for a homestead exemption, so that's really the only way to do it. Dr. Trong is just do a lot of research. Um, as you can see, we've got a lot of residential units.
Hey, uh, is the town county help us in this, or we have to do alone and tell them, hey, this property been uh, planned to tax for over sixty-five? Because I know several property been uh, get fifty percent off on tax, but they ran out the house.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how much, I don't know how much work that TAD will do on their part of that. I think they uh, when we were doing it before, it was basically a lot of research on the part of one officer that we had working on it.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Trong. Uh, Councilmember None?
Thank you. Um, I was just wondering if you had a comparison of other cities to compare what we do, you know, to what other cities do?
Are you talking, are you talking about on the homestead exemption?
On the homestead and o- o- over sixty-five, disabled, if you have that.
Yes, ma'am. I, in fact, I pulled those numbers out today. It, you know, it varies. Um, one of the things that I looked at was, today I broke it down to cities in Tarrant County that had the same home values that we do, or less than we do, and I looked at what they do. And there was, there was eight cities that have the same, or, or either the same value or lower than we do, and of those cities, only two of them give homestead exemptions. Uh, White Settlement actually gives a twenty percent homestead exemption, but their tax rate is quite a bit higher than ours. It's point seven five five six nine three. And then Sansom Park gives a one percent homestead exemption, but the other cities don't, but but basically TAD will break it down. It's a pretty extensive list. And they just uh, break it down in the cities that, that give homestead exemptions and don't. But um, basically, when I researched it, the, the cities, the lower the valuations are, the, those are the cities that typically don't give a homestead exemption.
Right.
Like some of the cities, like, you know, Grapevine gives a twenty percent, but their valuations are quite a bit higher, and us South Lake gives fourteen, I think. So it was kind of um, interesting to kinda compare that, but of the cities that, that are lower than us, only two of them give homestead exemptions.
Okay. Because I, I received that same uh, TAD thing when I, cause I turned sixty-five and I can have my
Yes, ma'am.
Property, my property frozen, you know, but um, I, I remembered, it didn't have homestead on there, but it did have um you know, quite of the property taxes and things like that, and what I did notice was that the lower communities had much higher uh, property taxes, so.
Yes, ma'am. That was the other thing I, I broke out today, just in case it came up in the discussion, but um
They were valued more than Halton City for the most part, but I did receive that information. It just didn't have homestead on there. I I thought just about every city had a homestead.
No, there's, there's quite a few that don't have any homestead exemption.
North Richardson Hills doesn't have homestead?
Yes, ma'am, they do. Um
Hurst?
I'll tell you, North Hills. North Hills gives a fifteen percent homestead exemption.
Hurst?
What was the other one you asked me?
Hurst.
Uh, Hurst gives a twenty percent.
Okay. Um, Keller?
Keller gives a four percent, and they just started that last year.
Okay, so there are more than just Sansom Park and White Settlement?
More cities?
That you have a homestead exemption?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There are.
Thank you, Councilmember None. Uh, Council, I'm sorry, Dr. Trong, then Councilmember Fowler?
I just have one more question, the uh, the number four, property freeze. What is that, and uh, how do people obtain that? Qualify for that, and uh, can we change, or have to stay that way forever?
Once you turn sixty-five, your property taxes are frozen. So basically, what that's looking at is, it's like Councilmember Brown at the budget workshop, if you remember, he talked about, there's people that are seventy-five years old now, and they've had their, their taxes basically frozen for ten years. So I think what TAD does there is it takes into account what those frozen um, numbers would be, if they weren't frozen, if there wasn't an exemption for that. If that makes sense.
Thank you, Doc. Trong. Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
Mr. Lane, correct me if I'm wrong, but on the, it, it shouldn't be property tax free, should it, shouldn't it be, shouldn't, you know, had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Wright this morning, and shouldn't it be property tax ceiling, because are those properties not, if the values increase, they're still taxed at a higher rate? But their, their, their rate is frozen, but the value of the property's not frozen. Is that correct?
They, they get a fifty thousand dollar exemption on whatever their, the price of their home is, and then on top of that, we give them a ten percent homestead exemption.
Correct. But if the value of the, but, that's not, it's not a, it's, I think it's a misnomer that it's called a freeze, but it's not actually a freeze, it's a ceiling, because it's not to exceed whatever rate they are when they hit sixty-five. Let's say their rates Let's say their rate's .699, they turned 65 last year. Does it not, if the value of the property goes up, it's still taxed at .699 even if we went up to $1?
It's the property value that is frozen.
Okay, so the value's frozen.
It's not the rate.
And I think that's where they come up with the property freeze number, the 105 million.
That's the ceiling that is.
That's, that's the loss that if we did take into account their increased values, that would be put on top of what our valuations are.
Okay. Well, then help me if I'm wrong. Is the over 65 and the homestead not, that combined number, should that not be the same as the property freeze or the property ceiling? Or is it a separate number?
Say it again.
You're, you're getting an exemption for your homestead. You're getting an over 65 tax. And then where, how do you determine what's a freeze additional besides those?
Okay, if you reach 65, you will be qualified to have the 50,000 exemption as well as your property value will not increase anymore. Say, when you turn 65, your property value, say, is 90,000. So, next year, the property value become 100,000. You'll be taxed only at 60, I mean, only at 90,000. Plus the 50,000 exemption, plus the 10%.
So, then it goes taxing at 40, 40K?
Right.
So, then how is the, how is, if your rate increases, so then, so then if your rate increases, then, then the senior still pays more?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the rate, it's not the value.
Okay, so the rate, the rate is, the rate is, the value's frozen, not the rate then?
Right. It's the value frozen, not the rate.
So, Jennifer, using your example, if you have a house that's 40,000, you hit 65, your, your
You don't pay any taxes.
Okay, you're, okay, so you don't, okay, let's go 90,000.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's frozen at 90. And then you get a $50,000 reduction of your house value that goes down to 40, and so your tax on that 40.
Right.
Okay, just making sure.
And plus the homestead as well, the 10%.
Oh, I forgot the homestead.
Yeah, you forgot the homestead.
That's a bonus. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Fowler, do you still have questions?
No, sir, not yet.
Okay. Councilmember None.
I'm sorry, I keep hitting the wrong button. Um, by putting the revenue loss up there and the percent of residential, are you considering taking away that property, uh, freeze on the over 65?
Uh, Ms. None, can you pull your mic? Thank you.
Okay, by putting up there revenue loss and what we're losing because of the property freeze, is it a consideration that you have that we, um, do away with the, um, over 65, um, exemption?
Well, you can't.
You can't?
No, ma'am. Once you voted in, it's, it's there. But like I said, this is a report straight from TAD. This isn't my numbers.
Okay, just because the revenue loss is, is just kind of odd. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember None. Mr. City Manager, do you have any, anything else regarding this?
No, Mayor, I didn't, um, but, you know, I know Councilmember Fowler wanted to discuss more into the budget. So, we're here to answer whatever questions you might have.
Absolutely. Uh, Councilmember Fowler, did you have any more speci-, did you have any specific questions or comments regarding the budget that you would like to address?
No, there's a, I, I, and I asked Laura, there was a, like I say, we had the opportunity to go and, um, to a seminar that Ron Wright, the Tax Assessor Collector, put on this morning. It was very informational on, you know, to better educate and better provide an opportunity of, for people to understand the effective rate, the rollback rates and all those things. So, you know, it, it's a short video and if y'all would indulge me, I think it's, it'd be beneficial to us as a council. Mr. Brown took the time to go, um, and it's for newly elected officials. But it's really informative and it's good for, you know, not only, you know, us as councilmembers probably see, but the, the viewing audience and, and even the employees that are here, what, how it's made up and how this thing's, uh, he, he spent, you know, like I say, he spent a little time developing this and it's, it's really pretty informational, so. That's fine. It sounds the main thing, but. And this has been, I think Mr. Wright had put it out. Some, some of y'all may have already seen it. But if not, it's, it's really a pretty, pretty, like I say, pretty informational video.
So, you got your appraisal notice in the mail. Don't panic. There are things you can do to lessen the impact higher appraisals have on your property taxes. Start by arming yourself with the basic facts about property taxes. Hi, I'm Ron Wright, Tax Assessor Collector of Tarrant County. Three factors are used to calculate the property taxes you pay: value, exemptions, and rate. Appraising the value and granting exemptions is the responsibility of the Tarrant Appraisal District. Tax rates, the primary instrument of taxation, are adopted each year by the local taxing units in which you live. Almost all property owners in Tarrant County will pay taxes to at least five local taxing units: the county, the County College District, Tarrant County College, the County Hospital District, John Peter Smith, a city and a school district. Some residents will also pay taxes to the Tarrant Water District or the Emergency Services District that provides emergency services to residents in unincorporated areas of the county. Although the exact percentages may change from city to city, the largest consumer of property taxes is always the public schools. The Tarrant Appraisal District, or TAD, is governed by a board of five voting members appointed by the taxing units in the county. The Tax Assessor Collector sits on the board as an ex officio or a non-voting member. The Chief Executive Officer of the Appraisal District in charge of day-to-day operations is the Chief Appraiser. Taxes law requires that all property appraisals be fair and uniform and that a roll of all properties with names, addresses, exemptions, and values be provided to the taxing units by July 25th of each year. Taxpayers who believe the new appraised value of their property is wrong or unfair have until May 31st to file protests with the Appraisal District. Taxpayers can work directly with TAD staff or a hearing before the Appraisal Review Board, the ARB, will then be scheduled. The ARB consists of approximately 72 citizens of the county who meet in small panels for several months to hear appraisal protests. Many appraisals are adjusted through this process, but it's just the beginning for taxpayers concerned about ever-rising property taxes. The process doesn't end until tax rates, always the determining factor, are adopted by the taxing units five months later. The governing bodies of local taxing units, school boards, city councils, et cetera, publish their truth and taxation information every August. This includes the effective and rollback tax rates. The effective rate is the rate required to produce the same revenue from the same properties taxed in both the current and previous years. It does not include new properties or new construction. As a general rule of thumb, in a growing economy in a growth area like ours, a new adopted rate greater than the effective rate will result in a tax increase. The rollback rate is the rate that would result in an increase sufficient to trigger a rollback election, currently 8% in the state of Texas. By the end of the fiscal year, the local taxing units must adopt their operating budget for the coming year and a tax rate that's projected to produce enough revenue to fund the budget. For the vast majority of taxing units, the fiscal year ends September 30th, although some entities in the state have a fiscal year that ends June 30th. The County Tax Assessor Collector takes the value data from TAD, applies the tax rates adopted by the taxing units, and sends out tax statements in October of each year. Although taxpayers have until January 31st of the following calendar year to pay their property taxes without incurring penalty and interest, taxes are due upon receipt of the tax statement. The property tax system in Texas is designed to ensure that elected officials who are accountable to the people determine how much taxes you pay. Each year, the various school boards, city councils, commissioners' courts, and other governing bodies adopt tax rates that will increase revenue, decrease revenue, or keep revenue the same as the previous year. Property values are known in the spring when the appraisal district sends out appraisal notices. But taxpayers don't know what their taxes will be until five months later when the taxing units adopt their budgets and tax rates. The tax rates adopted by local elected officials always determine the amount of taxes that appear on your tax statement. Taxes are collected for one purpose only: to fund government operations and the many services we've come to expect from our local governments. There's always a direct correlation between growth in the cost of government and growth in taxes. The widely-held notion that property value drives taxes, that if value goes up, taxes will automatically go up, is and has always been a myth. Under the Texas Constitution, the only entities that can impose or raise taxes are those to which the state has granted taxing authority. Appraisal districts have no taxing authority. Nothing an appraisal district does raises taxes. Section 2519 of the Property Tax Code is clear and includes this statement: "Your property tax burden is decided by your locally elected officials, and all inquiries concerning your taxes should be directed to those officials." It's in the law. Property value, as it relates to property taxes, is inert. It doesn't drive anything. Government spending drives taxes. Government spending drives tax increases. It's the only thing that does and the only thing that ever has. So, if you don't like your appraisal, don't be a screaming goat. Do something about it. Do your homework, prepare your case, and protest your value, or hire someone to do it for you. Just remember, this is only the beginning of the effort to lower your property tax burden. The end comes later when the taxing units adopt spending budgets and tax rates necessary to fund those budgets. That's when the choices are made by your elected officials that determine how much taxes you will pay. Citizens are always encouraged to engage their local elected officials about property taxes and any other concerns they may have that fall under the responsibility of local governments. I hope this has been helpful. Thanks for watching.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just wanted to, I, I just thought that that was, it was a pretty, uh, clear and concise how the taxing process works from the effective rate all the way through proposed rates and the deadlines and rollback rates and the many things that are involved in it. So, I just wanted to share that, because Mr. Wright seemed to do, you know, a pretty good job in explaining it. And it's, it's a fairly difficult issue to understand. So, you know, I, I think that if anyone would like, can we have, can we provide that on a, how would we do that? Or, Mr. Gro, you're the...
Well, I'm sure it's on YouTube or someplace like that.
I think maybe on the county website.
Okay, so probably the most efficient way, way would be to put a link and just link it to that. Okay, and then instead of putting it on our server, and since it's already exists, and then we just, on our website, we just link to that site.
Okay, thank you. I teach y'all and so I appreciate it. That's all I have currently, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Does anyone else in the City Council have any questions or comments regarding the fiscal year 2017 and 28 budget? 2018 budget? Okay, well, seeing none, Councilmember Fowler, do you have any other specific questions? Or, uh, Mr. City Manager, did you, did you have any, uh, comments or feedback regarding the, the presentation we just seen from Tax Assessor Wright, no?
Mr. Brown had one other question. Our, our, uh, Mr. Lane, our proposed employee incentive package was 2% across the board. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it was about 483,000?
It was 2% and then to fund the steps also for the sworn employees.
And that was about 483,000?
Um, I think that was the general fund impact was 400 and... Jennifer, correct, he said 480, is that right? General fund.
I think the number is about 421,000 dollars.
Did that include sworn also?
Yes.
421, okay.
That was general fund and we also had other funds that were paying portions of that also.
Okay, thank you.
Is that everything, Mr. Fowler?
Yes, sir.
Oh. Okay, well, seeing no other questions or comments from the City Council, I guess we're done with the work session. Uh, we'll adjourn at 6:55 and we'll reconvene for our regular session at, uh, 7 o'clock. o'clock. Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our August twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen City Council...City Council meeting. The time now is seven oh five. If you're looking at your agenda, what we're going to do is move Agenda Item Number Two ahead of Number One. So, the bond election will be the first item that we're discussing. This is something that Dr. Trong had asked that we place back on the agenda, and I'd like to give him the opportunity to say a few words if you'd like to, Dr. Trong. Yeah, go ahead.
Just about fifteen minutes ago, you saw IT lady have the whole microphone on the...look back this is twenty-first century, and the technology. This city hall is too old and outdated, for example, plus the...many facility in Haltam City need to be renewed. Each time I went to a different city, like North Gresham Hill, I keep look through the window, and I dream, in my career serving at the city council, or maybe future some other position, I would like to see we have a new city hall before I pass away. That's my dream. I am the police officer for thirty-one years. Each time I went to the police station here, tried to help the officer, especially for Asian, I feel bad because we have no place to sit around, talk, or discuss. We have to sit on table, open, talking. What if some other officer do investigation and suspect, hear the conversation? That could jeopardize officer life, and me too. I will retire from district attorney next year, but I wish our council thinking about police station and the fire station. That is the most important station we need to conduct investigation, to give the staff good place to hang around and waiting for the bat. Maybe, you know, as a firefighter and police officer, every day we got home, that's a safe day. July, when I were a fighter pilot, every time I land in the airport, airbase, I know I still have one more day to live. I always fight for police officer and firefighter and all the staff, and I think...I called a man, I said, "I need to put this..." your agenda again, because maybe some other council thinking again, "Well, should we approve the bond election?" Personally, I believe council cannot make decision to have bond election. The voter out there do, not us. So, I wish council, mayor, we thinking about the next vote to see if we won bond election. When I hit my button, it's for myself, you know? Doesn't matter, my opinion different with order, but, you know, we are friend, and only we do it for public service. Thank you, man. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Trong. Now, I'd like to bring... Now, I'd like to give our city manager the opportunity to introduce our financial advisor, Mr. Martin McClany.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got a few people here that are ready to speak on the bond election, also to answer any questions that you have. Everybody knows Mark McClany. He's our bond expert guru. He's here tonight. We also have David Campbell from Hewitt Zollers. Hewitt Zollers is who did our original concept design back...that we rolled out to you back in February. He's also been working with HAP. In fact, he's...David's the guy who introduced me to HAP. He's been working with HAP on a master plan design for the forty-three acre tract, and a little bit beyond the forty-three acre tract. And of course, we got Al Carmali here. Mr. Carmali's got an agreement with the EDC to develop a hotel and restaurant up on some EDC property right next to Eight Twenty. And then we've got Happy Baggett here, and Happy's...Happy's who we've been talking about on this master development, and like we've been talking about all along, really since February, is the difference between these municipal buildings that we're asking to be built and the typical ones are...these really are...we look at these as an economic impacter when we build these, especially in that tract that we have out for. So, Happy, you got a short presentation you want to give, and then you're going to be able to answer any questions, right?
A short presentation, right? Short.
Uh, I don't make any short jokes, even though I'm tall.
Cameras off of me, I kept saying, "Who's that guy look like? Ben Franklin?" And I realized it was me. I'm Happy Baggett. I live at six fifty South Main, Fort Worth, Texas, one seven...seven-six-one-oh-four. I just moved, I have to remember my zip code. Uh, no, Keith and Rex, and thanks for the opportunity of looking at this. I brought a few slides tonight, kind of what I'd like to hit on in talking about this master plan, and I think this is the thing we have to say over and over. I've been doing this for forty-five years. We do master plans. We don't go a little deal here, a little deal here. Everything has to flow together. How does this affect property a mile down the road, property along Eight Twenty? What impact is this having in the overall perception of the city? I think one of the big things that we look at is, what is the perception of Haltam City? Is it one-twenty-one? Is it Belton Ave? Is it Eight Twenty? You've got such a long corridor of city through here. Where can you really identify what the image of Haltam City is? And I think what you've done, starting from the library going up to Eight Twenty, what you're doing with Al and things there, that's the next heart of the pie. That's going to be your next image, because you've spent a lot of money to create a great image. For everybody, if you don't know, image is very important to me. I'm very short, so I have to dress like this when I cross the street, I don't get ran over. So, how you look is very, very important, so people will see you. And I think in cities, you people, business people, I myself, coming in, we walk in and go, "I just...now I have a perception of what Haltam City is. How is this building? It's not good." I'm talking to you real straight and honestly, from industrial developers, residential, commercial, we look at how does the city present itself. I think you have great opportunities here, you've done a lot of great things through here, but I think you need an image. Uh, do we have the Renaissance page? Let's kind of look this up. I can't do this. This is an article that Fort Worth Start Business Press did on Renaissance. This two-hundred-and-seven acre development I have in southeast Fort Worth, which is in the very, very poorest part of the city. We started ten years ago on this property. It's a ten-year overnight success. Can we go ahead and go to the site plan? Sixty-seven acres, commercial, two-hundred-and-seven acres. This is the old Masonic home. It was orphaned since eighteen ninety, had not been built on. It was the largest undeveloped tract in southeast Fort Worth. So, Mayor Mike Moncrief came to me and said, "Hap, can you come do here what you do in South Lake Trophy Club, Roanoke?" I said, "Mr. Mayor, I think you got a great project here that we can do something with, where no building permits larger than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars have been pulled in twenty-seven years, in a neighborhood of a hundred and thirty thousand people." So, we took the site. As of today, we have about four hundred million dollars worth of Class A development on this site, and we'll be doing another hundred and twenty-five million. Everybody goes, "How did you do this in this marketplace?" The first thing we did, we knew that there was a market there, but the very first thing we did, if you can see on the right, the kind of red, that's a nineteen-acre, eleven building, the old Masonic Home campus that was built nineteen twenty-five. And we looked at that as that's our institutional site. That's what's going to set the trend for all two-hundred-and-seven acres and a half billion dollars worth of development on this site. So, the first thing we did, we said, "We're going to sell this or give this to the best nonprofit we can in town to set a new image for southeast Fort Worth." So, All Church Home, ACH, that campus, we gave a ten-million-dollar gift to them. They've spent another seven million dollars since that time. If you look at the yellow to the left, that's our two-hundred-thousand-square-foot charter school uplift. The number-one charter school in the state of Texas, have twenty-two campuses in Dallas, Fort Worth. One hundred percent of our kids graduate from high school every year, and we don't cherry pick. Seventy percent of our kids graduate from college within four years. If you look to the...down to the far left, about in the middle below the yellow there, that's our new forty-thousand-square-foot YMCA, largest YMCA in Tarrant County with a three-acre water park. What's common with all those things, excuse me, up at the top, the blue up there, Cook's Children's Facility, the largest facility that Cook's has outside of their main campus, over forty thousand square feet. It's the only campus that has not only pediatrics, but dentistry and behavioral. So, we seeded our property with institutional, so that we could bring in Class A retail, Class A housing. We knew it was very important to set a new standard, set an image, set an impact of, "This is who we are," in the middle of an area that since nineteen sixty-nine has been downhill. Matter of fact, in three months, we'll be announcing the first movie theater on the east side of Fort Worth since nineteen sixty-nine. I mean, that's how depressed the area was. Haltam City's not that way. You've got a great product here that you've already spent a lot of money on, with the Eight Twenty, the infrastructure through the roadway, your proximity to Eight Twenty and transportation. I think we talked last time that Eight Twenty and how you can get on and off from Haltam City for the millennials, man, that is a speedway out there. One of the things we talked about in Fort Worth is, if you take east side of Fort Worth and the Woodhaven area there, where all the apartments were built, sixty percent of the apartments being redone, they're being redone for people who work in Plano. You can get from east side of Fort Worth on George W. Bush Turnpike to Plano and Carrollton faster than you can get to Alliance Airport in Fort Worth. So, mobility has a lot to do with it. You're sitting in the right place, you did the right thing up against Eight Twenty with all of your infrastructure in there. So, as we go through...can we go to the master plans out there? You told me to be short, and I'm...this is...this is our retail up front. They told us in Fort Worth, we had fifty-eight grocery stores in southeast Fort Worth. Well, if you sold bread, milk, and banana at the front counter, you were counted as a grocery store. It's food desert, so we have the largest Walmart in Tarrant County. We have over five hundred thousand square feet of Class A retail where none existed. If you see all of our restaurants up front, from McDonald's to Panda Express, they are the latest versions of their newest buildings in an area that has not seen anything. So, we've created thirteen hundred jobs just in this one area that we've placed back into within a mile of the neighborhood. Let's go to the master plan of the...for...yeah, just keep going through that. This is our residential, if you come see it. It's the finest multifamily housing you'll find in Fort Worth, Texas, in the very poorest part of town. We are...we started leasing six weeks ago. We have a three-year waiting list... We have a three-year waiting list on our market rate units for people who want to be close to downtown, the quality. This is going to the forty-three acres from, the library would be the pink on the left with eight-twenty to the north. And as I've looked at the property, and I'd like to make it clear, I've, you know, we, we have not talked about me developing anything. What I've been doing is informational of, here's what I do, what I see, I think where the opportunity is here. I think you've got the heart of the pie here, going to Otaga, North Bristland Hills, that this market, and this product is to sell to the marketplace, to the north, and to the east, and to the west. The hardest thing about this site is what everybody has in this part of town is, Alliance Town Center has taken up all the commercial. They've got two million square feet of commercial, and it's just close enough that they've sucked up all the business. So retail is tough. What, with the roadway, because, uh, design that you have, the access that you have, what Al is doing down along twenty, eight-twenty, excuse me, in the green there, oh, thank you. I thought I had a magic hand there for a second, in that area, that's where your retail is going to occur, because it's visible. That's the perfect location, which was happening to the north and the east and the west, the transportation. That's your commercial. That's your front door. As I looked at the forty-three acres, the colored part, the bottom there, I go, "How do we create..." And this is just listing about town hall, police department, fire station, libraries, everything. How do we create a town center? How do we create a new image for Halton City that, like, I think will happen, like, what has happened at Renaissance, is that we've seen up to a mile and a mile and a half away from Renaissance, new developments occur, because we set the standard. We set an image in the poorest part of town. Now, there's developments going up all around us, just because we seeded it correctly. So as I've looked this, I think there are two things I see on the site, just as a master plan developer, forty-five years, is creating an institutional area, because commercials is going to be hard to get. It's, it's, like I say, it's already gone. So if you look at, to the left, you've got the library right above there. I've looked at the six acres to the bottom. I think that's where you need your new senior citizen center. And I was proud to find from Bobby, I toured the center, that my grandfather went there for fifteen years. He lived here in Halton City. And I found out what a ladies' man he was at the senior citizens. So, and I'm sixty-five, so she tried to sign me up, but I said, "Look, give me five more years and I'll sign it." So looking at that facility and the people that serves. Then to the left of that, the right of that, the blue, and this is what I'm, if I had a wish list of, how do you create image? How do you create activity? The city hall and the police department across the street from senior citizens and the library. You've already seeded this with the library. So what that does with, in a plan of four institutional buildings, creates a plaza in between the middle there, between the pink to the top there, which is our retail, uh, center, excuse me, our boutique retail, that's what we'd be looking, going there. But now, it creates a gathering place. We now have a mini Sundance Square. How many locations do you have in North Tarrant County to gather? Where you have institutional buildings. And if you look at what the bases build downtown, those are institutional buildings. So we see that with our retail, the corridor going back out to eight-twenty. Then we see taking the rest of the property and going in with senior housing, senior living, five-story, one-hundred-and-twenty unit. Class A, what I call, what I live in, I'm sixty-five, and I live with a hundred and ninety-seven millennials on one floor in apartment. I mean, it's, for the first time in history, people from twenty-five to thirty-five years of age, and people from fifty-five to sixty-five years of age, want exactly the same thing. We want services, we want accessibility. I don't want to mow the yard. I haven't mowed the yard in ten years. I got tired of wearing out my sports jackets while I was mowing. And so I don't have to do that anymore. So the world has changed. So going to, from senior housing to Class A multifamily, to the end over here to our town homes, creating not a grid system, but neighborhood nooks of what I call brownstones. If you've been to South Lake, where you have brownstones going up to the street, one of our design standards, we pull everything up to the street, put all the parking in the back. We want you to feel like you're driving down a boulevard in Brooklyn as you go through, as you temper these. Then we've laid out some plans to the right, going up the top of, that becomes another commercial property for you there. That's the gas station and the four acres that goes up to the lake. That lake is a great amenity. Along the lake is hard to design, because it's too much traffic on the service road to turn right to get into that property. People get pushed down the road too quick. So we see from a master plan, that section being a very nice, high-end boutique retail area. Then with what Al's doing along the roadway with hotels, restaurants, the opportunities there are fantastic. But we need to create an image for Halton City. I think you've got the opportunity now, because you've spent a lot of money, you've spent it well on your infrastructure, to create a town center that gives you an image in Halton City. That's about as short as I can get. Yes. Yeah, we see the, can you go to the roadway that's... Yeah, there? Just follow that road down, down to the south there, yeah, down like that. You can't believe the volume of traffic that comes off of eight-twenty down that roadway. That would create, and sitting up on top of hill down where the city hall, police department, the library, senior citizen, and the retail sits on top of the hill, you can see forever. Same way with the town homes to the back. This is a very prominent piece of land. Guys, I'm a land developer. I do not, if it's taller than a fire hydrant, I didn't build it, because I can't see over it. But I buy land, I master plan it, I work with over a hundred and seventy vertical developers from around the country. That's all they do, is work with the top, they do the best. And they, we look for properties like this to design, and then, instead of me going out and building a shopping center, I go through my seventy shopping center developers, go, "Who's the guy that's perfect for this deal?" And you start matching product with property. I think you have a wonderful piece of property here. I think you've done great work up along eight-twenty. I think the opportunities there. I would stress that this is my wish list. If I were doing it, this is what I would do. I think it's very important to create an image.
Thank you, Mr. Baggett. Excellent presentation, sir. Mr. City Manager, did you have any comments that you wanted to add to the presentation?
No, sir.
Okay, well, thank you. So I know that when we talked about this last week, some of the council members, they had some, some questions. They wanted to see more information regarding potential development ideas for this property. I wonder if you have any comments or questions for Mr. Baggett or city staff regarding this, this projected use for this property? Councilmember Fowler.
Mr. Baggett, have you, do you have anyone that you've already spoken with or in place to, let's just say, we were to choose you, but you obviously are in contact with a lot of the vertical builders that you have. Do you have someone in mind already, say this, that would develop, say, the multifamily and the senior living, or...
Yeah, okay, my God, okay. If you would, please.
I'm from the Ross Perot School of Developers. I don't talk about my deals till they're done. Till my plans are put in place, my deal is cut with the city, with standards are set, I do not shop. They're finding users. It's, it's like catching a cold. You can catch it anyplace else. So when I see developers out there going, "Well, I'm getting ready to do this and do this," and I look at it and go, "How can you do that? I can't do that." So no, I do not pre-shop my properties, because there's more, with the right development, the right plans, the right standards, then I go out and say, "Here's what we want you to build." So, but do, do I have plenty of them? Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. Brown, Councilmember Brown. Mr. Baggett, you may want to stay up here with us for a few minutes.
Is my hair filling this back here? Of course, I want to, last Thursday night, I received this, first time. I think I had so many questions for Mr. Lane, Mr. Phelps, that he finally realized that, that Mrs. Davenport and Mr. Garrett hadn't even turned these in. So I take it home Thursday night after the EDC meeting. And, because I had so many unanswered questions. And the first thing I do, I look, I get home, start reading that night about eleven-thirty, and I look, and it says Municipal Campus Studies, City Hall and Police. I go, hmm, I've only heard about police and fire station, which is the fire, and I just received this, you know, there was no location, nothing. Our costs aren't real firm. And I don't want to sit, I mean, and I want to thank, you know, Heather and Jeff and Dusty for taking it to the police station. Yes, I am on you guys' side. We have got to create something better for them. But also, we need the city hall. And I don't want to have to go to the taxpayers, the voters, for just the city, or for just the police station and the fire hall. And I think if we can get citizen involvement, we, this is, I mean, I've been on two or three school board bond committees. And this is the weirdest one I have ever seen. We don't have any citizen involvement. We don't have a bond review committee to make recommendations to the council, what they would like to see. And I am just scared, yes, it needs to be sent to the voters, but I don't want to set it up for failure. And I think that's what we're doing. We're setting this up for failure, and if we do, and we've got a window of opportunity, I feel like. Talk to, talk to Mr. Baggett. With economy being where it's at, if we don't do something within the next nine months, a year, we talked, I mean, this bond election, whether it happens November or May, you can carry, it's not going to make one bit of difference. I think we need to go back and get the city hall in there, and maybe talk to Mr. Phelps, you know, and... I got up yesterday morning and, early, and got one of the other council members that's not always in agreement with me on things, and we drove to Colleyville. Came into town, drove into Colleyville, drove into South Lake, drove into North Bristland Hills. To see the synergy at these city halls, and, I mean, yes, we need the police station, but I think the city hall is just as important as the police station to create the synergy that we need. I think once you have an easier time to sell to your investors, if the city hall was up there.
As a developer, and I always go back to that, is what can you build? What works, what doesn't work? I can come in here and show, "Hey, we can do ten acres of commercial on this site." It don't work. Commercial's already gone. It's someplace else, there's kinds of commercials there. So master planning, whatever you do here is going to affect, like it did in Renaissance, a mile, mile through the rest of the city. You'll see other things. You'll see the Warren Inn disappear.
I hope so.
You'll see the Warren Inn disappear, because that's a fabulous location with a bunch of garbage on it. But until you do something that sets an image and sets a standard, then developers go, "Gee, what if I buy this and someone else comes in and just builds some crap over there?" When you set a master plan, and you set an image, and you work off the basis that you've got, then you can start having people build what you need, the way that you want it. Because that's what we, as developers, look for. Right now, I'm redoing Stop Six, have you heard about that in Fort Worth? Or Detroit. I've been working six months, remaster planning all of Stop Six for Councilwoman Gina Beavens, because there are no standards over there. We've got six hundred home builders want to come in, six hundred, home builders, six hundred houses come in there. They won't build yet, because they don't have any standards to go by. Well, if I go build this house, and someone puts a trailer house in across the street. So we're master planning the really poorest part of Fort Worth right now. And I think no matter what you do, when I did this in Plano, McKinney, South Lake, Colleyville, Highland Park, it's still the same, it's standards, standards. What can go in next to me, and what's the master plan? And we plan it from an user, end-user standpoint. Who is my client? Why will they come here? What will they pay? What do they demand? That's how we back into development. We don't, I think I used accounts before, that there's a great movie, saying, you know, if they build it, they will come, if you build it, they will come. It's a great movie, it's terrible line. It's not true. You've got to know what you're building, who you're building for, and why you're building it. But whether it's November or May, I'd rather have, we can sell all the sizzle all day long. I want the stake to go with the sizzle. That you can educate, bring people in, get involved, because it's amazing when you get people involved, some things that you wouldn't think of, that they have to work with every day in their job. Going, gee, if you just make this a little bit different, it'll make it so much easier for us. And that's the type of input you need in these type of developments. Not be afraid to listen to people. Now, I don't let people end up doing my final deal, because I've got forty-five years in it. But you listen, and you listen, and you listen, and you bring them as your partner.
Well, and that's what I'm getting at, I just, we've got to have the city hall up there. I don't want to set this up for failure, and we not be able to go back to the voters. Because I, I think we have an, you and I talked, we have a window of opportunity here. The economy's good. If we let this opportunity go by and don't get this bond package sold with, you know, go back and, like I said, I don't think May's a big deal, but go back and get city hall. We don't even know, really, we're, I don't see the police or the fire station on here yet. And we might even want to go to one building. I noticed that, you know, South Lake, Colleyville, they're, they're one building. I just, we've got this window of opportunity, and I feel like if we miss it, we're ten years out. Ten year, do you agree?
I'm sitting on a commission for the city of Fort Worth right now, a half-million-dollar study about the economic impact of what's going on in Fort Worth right now. And we all know that we're having, we're telling these guys to tell the politicians the truth. Don't bring in Pavlov, "Oh, well, Fort Worth's great here." We're making them tell us the honest-to-God truth. And what we tell Mayor Price and everybody else who we all love, is that when we miss this window, it's ten more years after that for you to get to start all over again. It's like Renaissance. People drive by there and go, "Wow, I'm a ten-year overnight success, because I work it every day." I was six foot four and had black hair when I started. And this, this deal, next May, for a developer, next week is two years from now. Development is slow. It takes time to put together. So when someone goes, "Hey, what do we, you're going to break ground a year?" I go, "Well, if I can get through the city in a year and get through all the..." "Yeah, sure." "Oh, wait, it's going to take me a year to design it. It's going to take me six months to bid it." So two, two and a half years to break ground is day after tomorrow. So if you don't start now, then you miss the window.
But you would agree that we need city hall in here, go back, get our figures on city hall. The difference between November and May is not one iota difference to you.
Yeah, not me, because you don't have, you don't have a plan.
Right, we don't.
You have a plan.
We don't have, we haven't really, this is the first time tonight that I've even seen where facilities are going.
We did that this week.
It's crazy. We don't, I don't want to set this up for very, to me, that's going, I love Halton City, and that's going to be the badge of Halton City. That's going to be our facade, welcome to the city.
Absolutely.
You know, I want it, but we've got to get it, but we've got to get it right. We can't set it up for failure right off the bat.
It's master planning.
Master planning. And I was talking, and the other night, gosh, last week, I met with the police officers for three and a half hours over there. Before that, I think I met with Keith and Rex before I went over there, about an hour and fifteen minutes, four hours. And then, on the way to the caterer, to the job site, Fireman Thomas, I think it was Sanderson called, talked to him for forty-two minutes. And so, you know, and then, like I said, got fellow councilmen up early yesterday morning, drug him around to see what these other cities have done, and the synergy it creates, and I'm just excited. I mean, we, we've got to do it, but we've got to get it right. And I will fight tooth and nail for my city and for the voters and taxpayers. But I think we're just, I wish you would have been here a month ago. That's what I can't, the police the other day, we're this close.
Don't, don't put this on me.
Well, and, and...
No, I'm teasing.
And Mr., yeah, Mr. Phelps, and I was talking the other day, and you know, both of us riding motorcycles, and we'd just love to sit up there ten years from now on our motorcycles, and maybe a Thursday night, bike night, look, and go, "God, look what we did." I mean, I would be proud of that.
I always ask every city I go into, and I've only built in fifty-nine cities in the metroplex, and you have competition from fifty-nine cities.
Sure, we do.
For everything, you, you're surrounded by seven towns here. And everything we do, from new product to how the world is changing, where old guys like me are becoming passe, is that, are you building this for you and your ego, or are you building this for your town and your grandkids?
Council, Councilmember Brown, if I can speak to just a couple of those things. One, you asked about the fire station. That, if, assuming the voters approve the bonds, assuming it's on the bond election, my recommendation, and I believe the most reasonable place to put it, is on EDC-owned property, just north of the railroad tracks on Halton Road, which is just south of eight-twenty slightly, but it's, we already own the land. Again, that's my recommendation, that to me is the most logical way, place to put it, because we don't want to go further north on Halton Road, because we're down at the bottom of the hill if they have to come up and then go, you know, over to Denton Highway. Also, speaking to the city hall, the city hall is already proposed to be on here. Now, with the proposed bond election, the amount, twenty million, five-hundred thousand, I believe it is, our capacity is about twenty-one million dollars. The reason the city hall was pulled off of there was we had discussed with Mr. Baggett regarding one of the developers would build it, and we would lease it back from them long-term. You know, that we would, we would achieve some cost savings there, it's my understanding, or my recollection. Mr. City Manager, can you speak? I know Trent Patty presented that option to us. Can you speak a little more in-depth regarding that?
Yes, sir. That was something that we looked in between February and, I believe, we brought it to you about a month ago in a, in a city council meeting. Trent and both, both Trent and Happy made a presentation that night about it. But Trent Patty seems pretty confident that we, we could seek out a public-private partnership with a developer to build city hall... But Trent Patty seems pretty confident that we, um, we could seek out a public-private partnership with a developer to build city hall, um, to our specifications and then we could do a long-term lease. And then that kind of dovetailed into the fact that, that when we talked to, to Mark about what our debt capacity was without raising the INS part of it, you know, it's almost exactly what it would cost us, estimated cost to build the law enforcement center and fire station three. So, you know, it kind of all worked together and, um, they feel pretty confident that we could, we could do that without having to pass a bond. But again, you know, it's been discussions between Trent and I and Hap and I, you know, over the past few months. Um, but that was, um, if you'll recall, I think it was about a month or a month and a half ago that we brought that to you guys and, and talked about that.
I understand completely. And, and I hope, I hope that's the way it turns out. But just in case it doesn't, I don't want to have to go to the voters again next year for city hall. We've got to have city hall in here. We've got to have city hall to make this, to synergize that whole area. So, and I hope that's the way it works out, that we can work out something with Hap. But you know what? Like I said, we're ju- we're just so close, we're so, I wish we would have had Hap a month, that's what I kept, kept on telling the police from the other day. I just, I would like to just sit back, be calm, and let's get this done right. Get it done right and, and, uh, get people involved. Get the citizens involved through a bond review committee and let's set it up to pass, let's don't set it up to fail.
Unfortunately, Mr. Mr. Brown, that's what the people in this room have been hearing for almost ten years now, I guess, right? We're that close.
I hope, I hope that, uh, I hope that, uh, we've got new leaders up here that can do something different.
Uh, council member, none?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree with Mr. Brown. We, we pres- we have asked since probably, I don't know, whenever we first saw a rendering come up about possibly a shared, um, shared between city hall and the police department. I've never seen any kind of a, and I know Mr. Fowler has asked several times about that. I've never seen any kind of a plan or any consideration regarding that. But this has been going on for quite a while. But again, this is the first time we've seen this. We have not had any, any community involvement, any, uh, citizens to do due diligence like they did for the two thousand and ten bond. And, I mean, you know, it's like, after the meeting last time, I went home and, uh, you know, my husband Gary, he was on the council in two thousand and ten when that bond was passed. And he asked me, and I, I had a little concern, you know? It's like, well, I voted no because I don't have the information I need. I don't feel comfortable as a leader of the city to have enough information to say, yes, I agree, we need it right now, as soon as possible. Because that's my job, is to, to be a leader and to get the knowledge that I have so that I can pass that on. So that people that are voting know, okay, the council, they have agreed, they know what's going on. We can trust them to do, um, so that we can go and vote what, how we want to vote. But I'm sitting at home with Gary, we're having a little adult cocktail, you know, after the meeting. And, um, um, he, he asked me, he says, well, what did your bond committee, what did they suggest? And I said, we didn't have a bond committee. And, you know, then he's like, okay, what about the bond financial advisor? Has he visited with you guys? No, no. And, um, so, you know, they had this before, they did their due diligence. They came forward before, this is in two thousand and ten, they came forward before the, the council. And they said, um, you know, they, they gave their, their, um, needs assessment and, um, then they made the decision it was put on the bond. Unfortunately, some of it was passed, some of it wasn't. This is my first bond deliberation stuff, you know? So, I'm a little in the dark, I've read a bit, you know, the internet is my, my favorite thing. But this was never presented, I felt like it was probably something the mayor or city manager might, should have proposed to us in making this very important decision. I mean, we have to look at our, our debt service, we have to look at, I've been here two years, you know, we've come a long way in two years. We still have a long way to go. I'm from Halton City, I want it to look beautiful. I love the master plan, I love this. Again, it's the first time I've seen it. I had some vision, you know, a little bit of vision about it. But how can you make these decisions without something concrete in front of you? And that's where I've been with all of this. So, again, I would like to see a shared facility, other cities do it, why can't we? It, it, you, you have, you know, so many shared, everybody's going shared, shared facilities, shared services. You know, that's kind of the thing, the wave of the future. So, I, I, I understand the development part, I don't think it has anything to do with the bond. And it, it, it's a very good vision, I, I love it, I love the presentation, I love everything about it. We need it, we need a new police facility, we need a new city hall, we need a new fire station. But we have to do it right and we have to make a perfect decision on it. So, that's my spiel, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nine. Uh, let's see, who's next, Dr. Trum.
May I have a little bit more thing about this? Nineteen eighty-seven, I become police officer, first Vietnamese in state, become officer. I went patrol one year and undercover, Stop Six area and Rosedale and South Side Forward. Look at Rosedale now, completely different. I have to say, they, council member, have more gut to make decisions, say, yes, I want to do it. We have Buddhist temple right there. Five acre land, only forty thousand dollars. Now, that temple worth three million dollars. Everything we do, we have to have gut to do it. The result depend on how the builder and how we are the one control it or manipulate, you know, what direction we need to go. If you can turn Stop Six to be a better place, man, that amazing. Because I work Stop Six every day, I buy dope every day. They call me old name because they can't call Mr. Trum, you know? By the way, on the city hall, I agree with the, the plan from, uh, the staff here. That the city hall let the private partnership, you know, jump into it and build and we lease. We might be working about like lease to own, you know, in the future. Because our city have so many senior citizen. We are poor city, we have to accept that. But we are improved day by day. We are not jump from one to ten like North Bristland Hill or Rishland Hill. So, if we present the package, bond election, include city hall, I bet you it won't pass. Because you shot the senior citizen here. Look at, we have majority senior citizen, include me and Bob too, you know? We get no, we are afraid of a big number. So, I think the police station and fire station number three, we're just about right price. And with the guy like Mr. Baggett, trust him. I think I trust you because I look at it forward right now. And I think our colleagues, we need to look at this issue again and see what we can do for a citizen out there. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Trum. I do want to give our city manager an opportunity to respond to something that the council member, uh, one of her concerns. He wants to respond to one of your concerns, Ms. Nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, when you picked me for this job in March of sixteen, that is when the plans for these buildings started. If you recall, you had meetings with all the different boards and all the different commissions. And one of the things that the city council members kept saying was, they wanted a plaza built, a, a center for the citizens to be able to gather. And they wanted the city buildings to be a part of that. So, when I first sat down with Hewitt Zollers, my plan for that forty-three acre tract and those municipal buildings was based on what this council, with the exception of Mr. Brown, told me and directed me to do. I didn't, this, this is not something that I came up with in, in my mind, quite frankly, I'm not smart enough to do that. But this was a plan based on what the council told me and directed me to do. That's it, it came from no other place. The meeting in February where I rolled that original concept out to you, if you look right up there, the only difference between the placement of city hall and the police facility is it's flip-flopped. But if you look at it, it still has that plaza feel like Happy explained, that you as a council direct me that you wanted. So, that's where it came from. If you go out in that hall and you take a left and you walk down to the end of it, those storyboards have been up since February. And the reason they were put up in February is we had a meeting and everyone with the exception of Councilmember Fowler said, that's what we want and we want to put it on a bond in November. I wish Councilmember Davenport and Garrett could Skype in tonight to confirm that. But that's exactly the direction that I was given as a city manager. So, that's where it came from. It came from this council, with the exception of Councilmember Brown, directing me that that's what they wanted. So, when we met with Hap and Trent a month and a half ago to, to throw out the public-private partnership on city hall, that was the first time that anyone other than Councilmember Fowler said, let's talk about doing a two-story building or let's talk about combining them. That was the first time. And if you remember, I told Councilmember Grow, it's a little bit late in the game to get this on a November bond and redesign the building. We, we can't do that. It changes the whole concept of the development. So, just to, am I defending myself? Absolutely. Because basically, that whole concept came up with, at the direction of the council. That's what you to- told me you wanted it to look like and in February you said, that looks awesome, let's do it. I don't put together committees. The council puts together committees. And I can tell you, I was, I was a part of the two thousand and ten bond election. And I can tell you, I can, this concept tells you ten times the information on the law enforcement center in the city hall than that bond election did. You couldn't say where it was, what it was going to look like, there was no needs assessment done, anything. So, this bond gives you ten times the information to the voter that that one did in two thousand and ten.
Thank you, Chief Ling. I have one other response to regarding the bond, the bond committee. Both the city hall and also the, uh, police department, police station was on the two thousand and ten bond elec- election. They both failed back then. Me personally, I see no need for creating another bond committee because they were proposed back then. Our need has only got, has only grown since then. So, to me, that would have been redundant to have another bond election, a bond committee to tell us the exact same thing they told us seven years ago. So, with that being said, uh, let's see here, Councilmember Grow.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, what Hap is describing, uh, with this master plan is completely different than what we're talking about today, about the bond election. I think the bond election will help the master plan, uh, get it rolling. We've heard a lot of things about people wanting to see detailed plans, detailed costs. We're putting up a veterans memorial where we had no detailed plans, detailed costs. And the number that I heard when it started was going to be a quarter of a million. Um, my, my guess is we're gonna, we're gonna pop a million, okay? And so, and like I said, when we shelled out another forty-five thousand dollars, uh, for the plumbing, for the water feature, hey, it's a top, it should be a top-notch thing, it's for the, the fallen veterans. I'm a veteran, I was fortunate enough, uh, not to have to go to combat. In my time as a police officer in Halton City, fortunate enough never to get injured. Uh, but we have one officer that his name's going to be on that, uh, facility. And so, it should be top shelf. Now, as for the issues with the, uh, debt service, this city has thirteen million dollars of property in the EDC that should not have been purchased in the first place. Uh, the Can of Worms, Fort Worth Weekly article, April eleventh, two thousand and eleven, they talked to the, uh, EDC director, a guy that, I guess, evaluates, saying, he's never heard of a, an EDC purchasing thirteen million dollars worth of property. I think we, again, I don't know, this is like the fourth meeting, fifth meeting that I've said this. The city should divest itself of all the property because this gives the EDC the, the opportunity to pick winners and losers. And we have three people that are part of the EDC that happen to be real estate guys. Okay? And so, if they're picking and choosing loser, winners and losers, there's an issue there. Or at least there could be a perception that there's an issue there. And so, it should just be divested, we keep the property that we need. You know, we find a master developer to, uh, do the forty-three acres that we've been talking about and just divest ourselves of everything else. We don't need it. We need the tax revenue from it. And with the city hall and a fire station, fire station three, great concept, when it was done twenty-plus years ago, we've outgrown it. We can't fit a truck that needs to be up in that area because we have to service those apartment complexes. Because God forbid if there's a mul- if, if there's a fire in one of these structures and we need that ladder truck up there, it's going to take them forever to get up there because they have to negotiate from the south of the city to get to the north of the city. And we want to make sure Bob gets serviced if something happens at his house. Now, as for the PD, you know, I, when I started my career, I was, I was fortunate enough to be able to be a police officer in Halton City. And I started out here in the city hall where we had, uh, just where the court is, that's where our PD. And when we went into the, uh, grocery store, that was a huge step up. But that was almost twenty years ago and that was an old building when we got it. And we've outgrown that building. And that building is falling apart, it's, it's showing its age. And so, we do need a, a new facility for that. And, um, and we talk about, you know, the perception of the city. You know, we're in rundown buildings. And I know, you know, um, I bought a, you know, I went shopping at Dillard's, they had a big sale, half off and then another half off. And I bought a two thousand dollar suit and for like five hundred bucks, it was cheap. But when you get in, when you wear, you know, comparing that to a, a two hundred and fifty dollar suit or a three hundred dollar suit and then you go to a two thousand dollar suit, you know what a two thousand dollar suit, why it costs two thousand dollars. And if, if our employees are going to be in facilities that reflect the services that they provide, I think they're going to walk a lot taller and be a lot more proud to be in, to work in this city. And we owe it to them. And so, um, I really think it's, you know, the fact that we have this reserve of property that's just sitting there. And we're complaining about the debt service, let's get rid of it, put it to the debt, let's get these buildings built and just move on. Because I think this is going to be the catalyst that I've been talking about. We just need somebody to push that domino and get the other dominos going. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Grow. Uh, Councilmember Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I don't know where, where you start, but you know, thi- this is not a battle of Axis and Allies, guys. I talked to some of the firemen today, police officers last night. This, we're all on the same team in this deal. Nobody in this, nobody on this panel, and, and y'all, correct me if I'm wrong, has said that we don't need those facilities. Has anyone said that? Didn't think so. That, that's not what it's about. It's about making the correct decisions. You guys don't have all the information that we have, y'all aren't provided that. I can go through here's a litany of things, I mean, let's just start with fire, fire station placement, a seven and a half million dollar fire station. Was that looked at by a, a, a professional consultant that just because the statement's made, well, we own a piece of property in the EDC, so we'll just stick it right there? Cause we don't have to pay for a piece of property? Or would it be better to apply and do it correctly and say, here's where we really need to place a station to have the correct service, to provide the right service level for our people? Have we done that? No? Okay? We've made a comment about city hall, about, oh, we, we, you know, we feel confident, it seemed, it seems confident, Mr. Petty. We know, I seemed confident years ago when a TIF was put up south of, or north of eight twenty. And it hasn't happened yet. We're confident about that and we, we know that at some point it will. And it's not that it's a bad developer, but it was probably a little loosely negotiated, you know? But we make these hypotheticals and we're looking, you know, we're, we're going through budget, budget retreats and we're worried about putting, uh, twenty thousand dollars in Mr. Van Nuenhugh's department for, for backup camera, or backup, uh, batteries for red lights. We have an incident on, on, uh, Denton Highway, I don't know how many of the police officers are here responded to that the other night where you had, y'all had to direct traffic, the same thing he's talking about. This is twenty grand, we're, we're debating on whether we can even fund. This is twenty grand. We're, we're debating on whether we can even fund or not. I get this. I talked to Mr., I, I called Mr. Lane the other day and I asked him for a copy of the amortization schedule for the proposed bond. Got this last Thursday. This is a thirty-year amortization schedule. I asked Mr. Lane if it wouldn't be a problem if I could utilize some of the staff or Mr. McClainey to make a call. Did I not do that, Mr. Lane?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Went through the right protocols because I'm going to do my homework. I don't know about anybody else, but I'm going to do mine. And of course, you know, that's just me. Uh, so I called Mr. McClainey on Friday and I asked him, "Mr. McClainey, did you take into account for any of the unissued bonds? The three million dollars in unissued bonds?" "Mr. McClainey, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if I'm incorrect with something, I would really appreciate it if you'd correct me and I have no problem with it." Mr. McClainey said, "No, there's more than that. There's like five million dollars in unissued bonds." "Was that taken into consideration?" "No." "When were those bonds issued, or when were those bonds passed?" "Twenty-ten." "We have to assume that those bonds are going to be used and utilized." So I asked for a new amortization schedule with the five million dollars in bonds and I got this Friday afternoon and I appreciate you doing it for me. Guys, it's not, and ladies, it's not whether or not there's a need for these facilities. It is not, I've spent time at Station Three today. You guys need a new station, period. It's due to the fact that when you need a new apparatus or when we get a new apparatus for that facility, it will not fit. That's a logistical problem. I don't deny that. That's not, that's not the issue. The police station, it's old. It's, needs work, you know? It, it really needs to be bulldozed. Okay? I agree with that. That's not the issue at hand. The issue at hand is can we afford this or not right now? And it's irresponsible to come in here. How many of you guys sat for eight years and didn't get a raise at all? At all? Okay? Now, we had to step in and correct those problems. We drew down reserves and if y'all want me to go further and I, and I offered it to the fire department today and I'll offer it to the police department. And I offered at the meeting last week, any of y'all that want to sit down and get a big chief tablet and some pencils and calculators and us go through it, I have no problem. If you can convince me that there's, the funding is without any problem, that there's no problem funding this indebtedness, I have no problem supporting it. And I'm not saying that we can't do it. But I'm just saying right this second, I am not going to jump to conclusions and force a bond upon the citizens. It would be irresponsible for me to do that. That's the whole thing at issue here. It's not whether we need it. It's not whether we want it. It's whether or not it's the right time and the right placement of these facilities. Now, I understand that that's, you know, some, that may be a little bit, you know, like I say, I don't want to get too deep into it because we can go to it and the slides are up there. But when you have, when we're drawing down reserves like we're doing and the things that we're doing, it's financially irresponsible, in my opinion, if we jump out there and do this. Now, is, is, are we closer than we were? We're much closer than we were. But, you know, I, like I say, I don't want to bore everyone with a ton of details, but anybody that would like to talk to me about it, I have some extra handouts here that I'll give you. And these are some of the numbers that I'm looking at and if y'all can convince me, I have no problem. But it makes no sense to do it, in my opinion, right now. We're changing around debt service. Mr. McClainey, you're reloading debt service that we owe that we had a current schedule to put it on the back end of a note, are you not?
This is on, on what?
On, on, I'm sorry.
August twenty, this sheet, Mr. Fowler?
August twenty-first.
The, the sheet is what?
Yes.
Um, in this instance, we're, we're delaying a little bit of principal.
Okay.
But it, it's, in fairness to these schedules, this assumes a lot of things that I have no basis of the assumption. One, that we issue twenty-six million dollars right now, right, well, after an election. In my email to you and I, I, I shared it with, uh, the city manager, said, "I wouldn't recommend issuing twenty-six million in one fell swoop." So yes, I put five million one eighty-three on a twenty, and I believe you handed this out to council.
Yes, sir.
So everybody has this. Uh, I did five million one eighty-three, which is two million eight for parks and two million three for roads that were part of the two thousand and ten issue. I ran them on what's called level debt service for twenty years. Just principal and interest combined payments level. There's no plans that I'm aware of, of issuing that money. That's a direction from the city council. It's what I would call voted and unissued bonds. That was part of the larger issue. You as a city council will determine at some point if you issue it and when you issue it. That's decisions for you all. So I'm assuming that's going to be sold right away after the election. Then I looked at the twenty million, the twenty-point-five million, Proposition Two, with a goal in mind. Not a direction from city council, but a goal in mind that I've worked with, with Rex and Keith and Jennifer. And that's what can you borrow maintaining what your current obligation is? Not your current tax rate, but your current obligation. And if you look at the sheet that was handed out, your, in the second column next to the fiscal year, your two thousand and seventeen bond payment is four million four. That's supported by your INS taxes. You all as businessmen and, and leaders of the council have to decide and, and manage the O and M portion, operation and maintenance. Mr. Fowler is exactly right. You have to look at all that budget for whatever is presented. I only look at the INS side, the debt service side. Your debt service drops after the year we enter, after fiscal year eighteen into fiscal year nineteen from four million fourteen, four million four hundred and fourteen to three million sixty-eight. So that goal of maintaining your payments of four million four is just something that we at the staff level have been showing. So I'm trying to fit dollars. So I wouldn't say it, it in, it in effect was delayed principal because in my mind, the goal was to keep your payments the same. Now, the other thing that I like and is structured this way, if you look at the far right-hand column, is you have declining debt service. And people in the council, a long time have heard me talk about, we want to have declining debt service in the future. That gives future councils decisions to do new capital improvements without dedicating new monies or move INS taxes to the M and O side. Again, business decisions that are outside of my realm. But we want to keep those decisions in your court, not our court. So you'll see on the far right-hand column, we, we roughly stay four million four, then it drops to four million two, then it drops to three million five and keeps dropping year af, you know, not year after year, but every few years there's a big drop-off. So again, not direction from council, but staff levels, how do we get the debt involved and get issued and maintain what we're paying, not increasing, and still leave drop-offs in the future? If we want to eliminate drop-offs, we can move a lot more principal up front, pay it off quicker. If you sell facilities or land, not facilities, you can use that to pay off debt faster. So I don't have all the answers, but I'm trying to show what can be done. And again, I would not recommend selling twenty-six million dollars in one issue. I would recommend spreading it out over two or three years to qualify for what's called bank qualified financing. If a city borrows less than ten million in a calendar year, you get bank qualified financing, which is about thirty basis points or one-third of one percent lower interest rates. So if you have a twenty-six million dollar approvals and you want to do the streets, parks and all this other, I would try to structure it a way that we sell one, ten million in one year, ten million another year and ten million a third year. Now, you may not be able to work that construction-wise, but those again are details that I haven't gotten into yet. So yes, if you look at the principal and interest schedule of the twenty million five hundred thousand, this is back to, you'll see the payments are roughly a million and eventually go to a million five. We don't know what the final interest rates are. We could structure it differently if we stretched it out thirty years. Just like a mortgage, if you go out thirty years, you can keep level payments longer. Now, I wouldn't suggest for the parks or the streets going out thirty years. I'd recommend keeping that at the twenty years. But for facilities that you're going to be using for thirty years, most schools, you go back to schools, they fund them for thirty years and they'll use them for thirty years. So there's a lot of flexibility that we've built in here so that you as a city council can give us direction. There's not one way to skin the cat. Your window, whether you decide November or May, is issuing sometime before you set your tax rate next year. That's your window. Because once you set, and again, this is, again, not a goal that you all have given me. This is a goal that I've understood from staff and that was maintain our current payment. Our current payment, if you have taxable value growth, which is coming, in this past year is coming. In theory, again, it's just theory, if you have taxable value growth, INS taxes go down for the commitment. If you have four million four payment this year and a four million four payment next year and your taxable value increases, the tax rate required to do that decreases by law. We don't have options on that. So in this instance, I'm using no growth. We're at four million four. Roughly this year, your tax rate's twenty-three, twenty-four cents for INS, only INS. Likely will be lower next year. Maintaining four point four as you keep increasing values, whether it's slow or fast. Two thousand and eight hits and it goes flat. So without doing that, your INS will be decreasing as your values grow if we maintain your four million four payment. So there's just so many factors involved in this and there's not a right answer or a wrong answer. However, if you wait until after, if you don't issue obligations before next summer, before you set your tax rate, your INS tax rate will decrease to thirty-five, I'm sorry, from roughly twenty-three cents to seventeen cents. Then if you do a twenty million five hundred thousand dollar project, you're going to increase from seventeen back to twenty-two or you won't be able to afford it. So window timeframe is important and that's something Keith and Rex and Jennifer and I've talked about is you need to have them sold before setting next year's tax rate. So timing is and windows are very important. Structure will keep changing as you all give us more details um, and, and let us know what your goals are and say, you know, gosh darn it, we're not going to issue this five million one eighty-three uh, for, we're, we're only going to issue two million for those parks and streets. We don't know when the rest are going to be issued. So it's there, this is issuing them all next year. And I don't think that's something that y'all are going to do. It may be. And you have the ability to do it, all of them, without raising what you're already dedicating towards it. But again, I wouldn't recommend issuing all, all at the same time. That's a lot of information in a short period of time and I'm happy to go through it in more detail, but our job is to give you the information you need to make the hard decision.
Thank you, Mr. McClainey. Uh, Councilmember Fowler, you still have?
Well, thank you, Mr. McClainey. And like I say, I appreciate you coming up and there are a lot of hypotheticals and that's, that's part of the, you know, that's part of the fun and the opportunity we have to, to budget. Um, Ms. Fung, could you, do you mind coming up for a minute? Could you go just for a second to our debt service, our total debt service funding source, this one?
This one?
Yes. Mine looks a little different, fifty-seven million. So currently our total debt service right now is fifty-seven million dollars that we owe. Is that correct?
Um, our outstanding, our debt service is fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven million one hundred and eighty thousand. What portion of that is general, general fund?
Is, uh, thirty-four.
Thirty-four million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, okay, and now let's, let's just assume, can you go to the next slide on, uh, that you helped me with on, I guess it's, is it, uh, oil and gas revenues? That's, now that one first. What are you recommending under the bottom under expenditures? Just, and this is just, this is just to help everyone understand what we're dealing with and how we're trying to balance this thing.
Okay. Um, in the previous year before, I worked in for Halton City. Um, we have some fund balance from the oil and gas and also in order to balance the budget, we've been transferring money from the, uh, oil and gas fund to the general fund to pay for the salaries. Um, so we've been, um, we still continue doing that. And also, if you know, when we borrowed the debt, um, that's right here. You can see that there's the, that's the oil and gas here. That, that is the bond, um, we issued. We have an outstanding balance of, um, three point seven outstanding debt service. And so every year when we do the budget, we have to transfer the required debt service to the, um, to pay for the debt.
To pay for the bonds?
Mm-hmm, to pay for.
A repayment for the bonds. Plus we have an additional debt service of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand that we pay out of that.
That is the four hundred and fifty-seven is the debt service, see?
The other is general fund expenditure for, for salary that we help use for salary.
Right.
Out of the oil and gas. Now, go to that slide, please.
This is what the number is.
Right.
Right here.
And it's steadily declining and there's,
Yes.
And there's at the end of, at the end of this budget year, there's proposed.
Okay. Okay. You can see that the fund balance for the, for the oil and gas fund is going down because you can see that the revenue is really about hundred and something thousand, it's less than two hundred thousand. But we are paying out the debt service as well as transferring to the general fund. You can see that the fund balance reduced by seven hundred thousand, yeah.
Okay. And twenty sixteen is two point seven million, two point eight million, right at it. That was our, that was the actual expenditure at the end of twenty sixteen. Your left column, bottom left column?
Right, uh-huh.
And proposed at, at twenty seventeen, we're going to be at one point eight. In twenty eighteen, this at the end of this next fiscal year, we're going to draw it down to one point one four. And yet how much is left on that debt service? If you go back to that other slide.
Three point seven.
Three point seven. So we stood, we're at a deficit there.
Right. However, you can see that, okay? So this is the number that we are trying to balance is not to depend on oil and gas fund for that. So we have revenue of about hundred and seventy to two hundred thousand every year. So this will, using the fund balance as well as the revenue for each year, it probably will be able to handle the debt service by itself here.
Probably will be able to.
Yes. I, I can't tell you.
Okay.
But I think that we are trying to make that the oil and gas will be able to support itself.
Okay.
By not transferring money uh, from the oil and gas fund to the general fund for the salary.
But it's right on.
That's why you can see that we are trying to reduce this. We're trying to reduce the transfers.
Right. Which I, which I appreciate what y'all are trying to do, but it's still something that we're required to do currently to make sure we can maintain where we're at.
That's why it has a lot of burden on the general fund and we are not really in a position to reduce tax rate.
Okay. Go to, go to the next slide, please. So that's for a more crude example. That's twenty sixteen and that's what that fund's doing every year. Is that correct?
Um, yes, but this should be, um, if we control this expenditure a little bit, not to tran- Yes, but this should be, if we control this expenditure a little bit, not to transfer that much to the general fund, this may be stable.
Okay. Okay. Next thing, would you go to the CCPD fund slide, please?
Okay, CCPD fund, you can see that from the previous year, we have the debt service and also transferred to the general fund. And we are already winning out of it, all the debt service or payoff for the CCPD. And also, we are not transferring any money for the salaries to subsidize general fund for the salary. So we already stopped it.
So that was a subsidy to help for our salary?
Salary for the step plan, yeah.
Okay, now, in twenty sixteen, that was, that, the revenues in that were one point six, one million six hundred and forty-six thousand?
Yeah.
And what was our, what did we end up with our year balance, our year-end balance?
Right here.
What is that?
That is a negative balance.
Negative ninety-five thousand dollars, okay.
The reason is there's some audit adjustment that is really for the post-employment benefit.
Yeah, I understand that, but it's still, it's still ends up with a fund balance of a negative number.
Right, but we already, when we see that, we already adjusted it by not spending that much and with the help of Chief Phillips and we were able to make sure that we are not having a negative, so, yeah.
So this year, again, so twenty seventeen, we're gonna get revenues of one million six hundred and four thousand and we're gonna end up with a, with a balance at the end of the year, a fund balance, finishing the year, we're proposed to be five thousand dollars.
Right.
Pretty close, is it not?
Yes.
Okay. And then next year-
I think it would be higher than that, you know, since we still have only one and a half months to go. And I know that this number would be a little bit higher than that.
Okay, but these are the numbers we have to work with, I understand that, that's-
And next year, we are balancing it out much better.
Okay, but you've got out of a million six hundred and thirty-six thousand, which that fluctuates a little bit based on sales tax revenues.
Right.
Cause that's what, that's what funds that CCPD. But you're still proposing or projecting twenty-five thousand dollar fund balance at the end of the year.
Right, for next year.
Out of one point six million, so we're really still running it pretty close.
Still very close, but it would be better and better.
It, it does get better, I agree, okay. That's the point I'm trying to make. This is not about, this is not about whether you agree with that, the numbers are the numbers. They're here, I mean, and like I said, I wanna, I wanna provide a new facility. I, have I ever denied that we don't need the facility? No. But I wanna be sure, I can tell you whether you agree or not, that's okay, I don't dis, I don't have a problem with anyone disagreeing with me. I mean, I have an appetite for debate and to me, it, it, all it does is it leaves your, you know, belly full of emotion if you decline debate. Debate is good, it's, there's not a problem with it, let's sit down and talk about it. But it would be irresponsible of me, when I, when I came back and ran for this, this place, there was a problem with step plans, with pay, with all that. That was the number one priority, I made that a priority and so did the other colleagues that sit up here. We fixed the problem, but we had to do it on the backs of hard work from, at that point, Chief Lane, being creative with the CCPD, with oil and gas revenues, with a lot of different areas, we had to figure out a way to balance it out. And we've done that, we've been able to do that and that will remain my priority. Now, whether you agree with that or not, that's, that's your choice. But I will, as long as I sit here, I will maintain that my first priority is to make sure that we take care of the salaries and take care of our employees, we're not having to go out and recruit new people. My second priority is provide you with the equipment that you need. And my third priority is to provide facilities. And so you have to balance those things and I'm not saying that you don't do them, but I'm just saying that it's my position that we have to balance those things. Now, I've heard everything in the world and, you know, the smear campaign of, well, Fowler owns seven homesteads and all the other nonsense that's thrown out there, you know, say what you want, that's fine, I don't, that doesn't bother me. The, the thing is, is if you wanna talk about it, you wanna discuss it, just like I told the firemen, just like I've always told all the police guys, pick up the phone and call me and we'll go through the numbers. If you can convince me, I have no problem. But I wanna make sure that I take care of those as priorities first. It's, will always be, make sure that we can maintain our plans to take care of our employees and retain employees. Provide them with the equipment that they need so that they can go home every night and be safe. And third, provide the facilities. Now, we don't hear anything about, you know, we have to look out in, in the best interest for the library, the parks, the public works, all the other things that are involved in providing services for our citizens and for the rest of you guys to have a safe work environment. So those, I can't make it any more clear than that, that's my priorities, you know, and if you disagree with that, that's okay, I don't have a problem with that. But let's just have an open and honest debate. You know, let's talk about it, let's discuss it. We're all on the same team at the end of the day, whether you agree with it or not, we're still on the same team. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler.
Mayor, before I forget, can I, I just wanna answer one of Councilmember Fowler's questions. I think it was at the very beginning, is he asked if we'd had a consultant look at the locate, the proposed location for Fire Station Three and the answer to that is yes. One of the things we did with the previous administration as they cycled out was, I asked the previous assistant city manager what properties they had looked at for a potential use for Fire Station Three and all of the pieces of property they had looked at were owned by private parties. So there was no city-owned property that suited the need at the time. If you remember, we did a lot of drainage work and got a Lomar approved for that piece, the EDC piece of property that is proposed usage. We were, we had GIS run the runtimes from there. And we also, when we first met with Hewitt Zollers on the potential design of Fire Station Three, they looked at the site and made sure that that site was capable of supporting the operations that we needed to. So that site's been vetted as, you know, as much as we can vet it. So just to answer your question, I didn't wanna interrupt you at the beginning.
No, and, and I do appreciate that and I, and, you know, no doubt, I know that, you know, Mr. Lane, you, you were my choice for the guy. That's not it, you know, I mean, I know that you're gonna do some of your homework and I do appreciate, but this is, this is exactly what I'm talking about. It's not, it's not the fact of the need, it's the fact of we just haven't had enough information, in my opinion, to make these decisions. That's the first I've heard of it. And it's no offense to you, you know, but it's the first I've heard of that being, already been vetted as a, as the proper place to put it. Well, you know, we're supposed to come up here and vote on this thing and I'm, you know, and I'm hearing that now it's, it's been vetted and it's the right place. So that's all I'm saying is, you know, sometimes you can get the cart before the horse and you can make some mistakes. And I, and I, we've had enough mistakes made over the years and, and it's, I'm not trying to slide other councils and all that. You know, a lot of times, it's the level of information that you have to work with and there's not always been a great deal of information to work with here for councils. So I do appreciate that you've provided us that now, but that just, that's all I'm saying. I think some of my colleagues are saying is, no doubt we need it, but let's make sure it's right, let's make sure everything's done. You know, I, I disagree with you, Mayor, that, that there's vetting. You know, you had a bond, you had a bond committee and you had a bond review, what is, we're almost twenty eighteen, eight years ago? Times change. You know, I, eight years is, like Mr. Baggett said, eight years is an eternity ago. You know, they may say we need a, you know, who knows what the bond committee comes back, I'm sure in working with the master developer and all that. But this has to be a collaborative effort, this, this can't just be a, you know, a one-off deal. It needs to be thought through and it needs to be thought, thought through well. And that's one thing that I, you know, that I respect of you and Mr. Phelps is, y'all do spend a lot of time trying to provide information and all that. I just think this one, you know, no matter what caused it to get where it's at, in my opinion, it's not quite ready. So that's my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler. Uh, Councilmember Groh, did you have a question or a comment?
Well, Councilman Fowler mentioned the library and the public works and those are fairly new buildings. They've been, you know, they, the fire station and the PD are far older buildings than the, the library and the, the, um, public works. Also, the city manager has been, how long were you a police chief? Seven years and then, and then he's, was foolish enough to accept the job as city manager for going on a year and a half now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so he's a part of it, so he knows, I'm gonna trust, he's our guy. He's the guy that we put in here, uh, we vetted him, we looked at other people and he's intimately aware of the needs of what, what the PD needs, what the fire station needs. And so, you know, I don't think having another committee or, cause he's already gone through the, the previous needs committee, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so he's intimately aware. The type of construction that Mr. Baggett does, yes, eight years is gonna make a big difference of what you put into a piece of property. But a police station's a police station, it houses police officers, they conduct investigations, they conduct interviews. A fire station's a fire station, they put apparatus and gear and then they roll off to go eat at someplace, go to Kroger's, get some food. And so, oh, I know what they do. I've been to station one while they put surround sound in. And so, but, um, so those are, those are services that every city uses. When a, a master developer comes in and looks at a piece of property, he's gonna look at what the demographics are, you know, what are other things that are local, so what his needs are are completely different than what our needs are. We need to house a fire station, we need to house police officers and we need a city hall. And currently, the only two things that are on this bond are the fire station and PD. So, you know, Chief has been here a long time and knows what we need. So I'm, I'm, I, I trust his judgment.
Thank you, Councilmember Groh. We've heard from every council member with the exception of one. I would like to offer Councilmember Watkins an opportunity to give us your feedback.
My feedback is short. I, I, I say the same thing I said last time, only, uh, I would like to say, and I agree with some of the, some of the people that have told me that if we put it off till May, it won't ever happen. There's, there's three things that can happen next, next May. I can be dead, I can decide not to run, I can run and lose. If none of those things happen, uh, I'm gonna do everything I can and I think Mr. Brown voiced the same thing, but I'll let him say it. I believe that the window will be open until May and I don't know whether we need a bond committee, I don't know that. That's, that's, I would think that would be advisable. But I think we need some more participat- participation from the, from the citizens and so I would be for having the bond, uh, on next May's election. Now, one of the reasons that I used to always say that there's a problem with that, the problem is that is if you're running, you're running on, you're either running on or against that, that issue. Well, I'm the one that's running or not running and, and I don't mind running against that, far against that issue because I also say that if you have it in November, it's gonna affect next year's election anyway, so. So my, my opinion is to put it on the, make, make sure anybody that, uh, disagrees, well, they disagree with me. I think it ought to be on next May's election.
Uh, Councilmember Groh?
Yeah, there's just one thing I wanted to add. If, if we're not willing to invest ourselves, how can we ask other people to invest in our city? And that's what I'm looking at, that's how I'm approaching this. This is an investment in our facilities because, you know, when people roll up, you know, they're gonna look at, you know, you know, the PD's got a nice coat of paint, but it's not really, you know, when you get into it, it's different. Uh, we do have two great fire stations, one and two, uh, three just needs to be replaced. You know, it was a great idea, a great concept twenty years ago, but it's outlived and the conditions for the guys that live there are not the best. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Groh. Are there any other questions or Councilmember Watkins?
I know, I, I guess I can speak for it because I think we have the hardest-working council we've ever had. We have, we've had two people leave and I think they added to being the hardest-working council we ever had. And I haven't got a lot of money invested in this city, but I've got an awful lot of time invested in this city. And if I live to Labor Day, I've been here forty years and, uh, I think that's the, what I said, I think it, I think May-
Thank you, Councilmember Watkins. This isn't posted for a public hearing, however, there are quite a few people here, I presume, are here to, for this agenda item. I would allow you the opportunity to speak, uh, if anybody would like to come up and talk about this. If you would just, yeah, make sure we're on, on this particular subject and, uh, no re- repeating the same, the same thing. Uh, Ms. Hilliard, welcome.
Hi, I'm Marion Hilliard. I served on the council for four years. Each of those years, the plan for these buildings was proposed and repeatedly, proposed, proposed repeatedly by a few members. Each time, we were told the same facts and figures and budget impacts that have been brought up tonight. Some also pursued, some of the members also pursued starting the, you know, you mess with this thing, starting the law and, the step system for the law and fire and we were again told, we can't afford to do it. So all those things got pushed back. Then guess what? There were methods to get done, things done and miraculously, the step plan can be done. I believe we now have the capability to get these things done and the timing is prime right now. If we continue with cannot-do attitude, we never will move forward and we'll always look back and lament that we wish we could improve our city's image and have better facilities. I believe we should put this on the ballot in November to get approval, to obtain the funds. Details are to be decided as we work toward this project. We failed a lot of times in previous councils, don't let us fail again.
Thank you, Councilmember Hilliard. Mr. Weiss, please come on up.
Many of y'all know me, Brent Weiss, I'll come up as a, not as a politician, but as that citizen committee review board you want. We've been wanting these buildings for a long time. I come into this city, I've been here, back in the city since two thousand and seven, I grew up here. Ten years I've come in here and I look at this place and I look at South Lake, I look at North Richland Hills who just took the TRE from us. And they're getting babes, they're getting all this business that we've bypassed. The stuff that was supposed to happen since two thousand and fifteen still hasn't happened on North Eight Twenty. We've gotta do something, perception is key, thank you. The sales tax revenue that will come off of this, I believe will offset some of these costs trade that you're talking about. Um, it's all about perception, get the business in here. People will come, people will spend money here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this? Welcome.
Hello, I'm Heather Hudson, I work at the police department. I wanted to, to thank Dr. Trong for his kind words and say that we all share that vision. You know, you said you want it to, to be revitalized, redone, the, the facilities before you die. We certainly hope that you see that. I, I, I honestly, I do. Also wanna say that there's a lot of employees that are fifteen-year and plus employees that, that know as soon as it's on the bond, they may not see the new facility just because of the time it takes to, to issue the debt, to do the plans, to turn dirt. So I would like, as a, a show of good faith to the employees and to the citizens who have been waiting, to get it on the, to get it on the ballot, let them vote, it's not gonna hurt anything. I understand, I, I very much understand where you're coming from, sir. I believe that you can work out all those details, you don't have to draw the, the debt down, I mean, that's what the mayor was saying last week. You don't have to draw the debt down as soon as it happens. And I do, I have a question, I would like to be educated if you can respond, since this isn't a, a typical public hearing. You were talking about the oil and gas revenue drawdown and the CCPD drawdown and about how we're getting it back in the, in the green from the red. Uh, I do want an opportunity for the city manager to talk to the citizens and some of the people that may not have known how the CCPD got drawn down in the first place, how councilpersons like yourself helped get the step plan fixed and helped fund that with that CCPD that we were looking at using for a building. So that was a trade-off and we all knew that that was a trade-off, but we did not feel like it was that big of a gamble cause we knew the council was behind us for getting new facilities. So now, several years later, we're, we're not any closer, well, we're closer, oh, 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 we're closer to getting it on a ballot. But we would like to get it on a ballot sooner because- But we would like to get it on a ballot sooner, because we know that every time that we delay it, um, it's a, it's another opportunity for council turnover, it's another opportunity for, uh, changes in the, the economy. We want to get something started that shows the, the employees and the citizens that we are going to improve these facilities. We may not turn dirt tomorrow, we may not issue the debt tomorrow, but we want the opportunity for y'all to have that authorization to do so. But I would like you to, to discuss with me how issuing the bond will impact the oil and gas and the CCPD, the way that you were talking to Ms. Fung, those things that they already have in place, when, uh, Mr. McClainey said that the payments are gonna be roughly the same for the INS. So I, I would like to know if the payments that we're making to debt service are roughly the same, how those funds even pig- you know, how they figure into your decision? Because it was a little confusing to me how those funds figure into the debt service that we're gonna keep making the same payments we're already making. But I would also like the city manager to have a, opportunity to explain what happened with the CCPD fund, if that's all right with y'all.
Before we bring the next speaker, do you wanna address Ms. Hudson's question?
Yeah, it doesn't matter to me if Mr. Manager, I'll go, it's, either way's fine.
Well, to give you a little history on the Crime Control Prevention District tax, when I got here in two thousand and nine, I got here in August as Police Chief, and, um, so I basically inherited a budget that I didn't have any input into. But one of the things that stuck out to me is we had about a ninety, pretty close to, to what we had a couple of years ago, we had about a ninety-five thousand dollar deficit that we were running in the CCPD. So, um, we switched a few things around. I came from Keller, Keller had CCPD, and I just basically kinda took some of the philosophies that we had there on how to build a fund balance. And by two thousand and fourteen, we'd built the fund balance up to a million dollars. Um, in the meantime, from two thousand and nine, as Councilmember Fowler talked about before, we, we were not funding our step plan for our, um, for our sworn employees, and we also weren't giving raises to the, to the, to the general employees. So what happened was we, we came to a, a position where we were gonna lose employees bec- based on that fact that we weren't funding the step program. So what we did was we, um, as Ms. Hilliard referred to, it was kind of a forced situation where the city manager, the assistant city manager at the time, um, sat down, there was probably four of us that sat down and said, okay, what are we gonna do? And, and, and basically, we, we figured out how much it was gonna take to fix the problem, which I believe, from memory, was about one point four million dollars of, of an expenditure to catch us back up to where we needed to be, because we'd fallen that far behind. So one of the things we did was we, um, and I did speak to the employees about it, met with the association about it, and what we agreed to do was fund the police raises, the police employee and the poli- and the sworn employees, to fund that catch-up with the CCPD fund balance that we'd built up. So what happened was we, we took it down to, the fund balance, we took it down to zero. Um, and at the same time, the, the way they funded it on the general employee side, one of the ways they funded it was the oil and gas fund. So that's how we got to where we are now, um, on that. And, and like Jennifer alluded to, you know, the reason that we saw the deficit that one year is we, we had to declare some, you know, unfunded liabilities that we hadn't before. So when you see a deficit on paper sometimes, it's because we have to show that deficit. But to answer Heather's question, that's kinda how we, how we got the CCPD down to where it is now.
Councilmember Fowler, do you wanna add anything to that?
Oh, I just, uh, and, and Mr. Lane, you and I went through lengthy discussions on that during that period, is that not correct? And it's, and it was not, and, and I can tell you right now, it's not healthy to do that. We, we did it because we were forced to, to try to take care of the situation. It's not, that's not healthy. It's not good finance. I mean, Mr. McClainey, you're here, is that good finance? Ms. Fung, or you're here, is that good finance? No, both of you say no? That's the problem, guys. You, you, I, I don't like it, you know, y'all think I'm emotionless and all that, it's not. I, I don't like not being able to do some of this stuff, but you have to be responsible, you know? And at some point, we have to say, you know what, we've gotta make sure that we can take care of this stuff long-term, and that's all I'm trying to tell you guys. You know, Ms. Hudson, you asked me, uh, uh, you know, part of it is drawing these funds down and doing the things that we've had to do is not healthy. It's not financially, i- i- it's not what, if you were to take your money to a stockbroker or a ba- bank board of directors, they would, they would probably not allow this. They would, you know, it's not good management overall. And that's all I'm trying to tell you guys. We're getting closer and closer. These guys have done a great job. They have done a fantastic job. You've got developers in here right now that are sitting here, people that are going to build properties and they're going to do things. But it's no different than Mercantile, Fuel City, you know, they've been open for a year. When did they go on the tax rolls, Mr. Phelps? When did they start? Just recently. So they've been operating for a year, and we're finally, this year, we're probably gonna see the first full year of financing from them. Even though they've been open, their doors have been open, they've been operating. There's a lag time in this stuff, and that's all we're trying to say is, yeah, it's great to go out and rev stuff up, I wanna get it right. I don't wanna halfway do it. I want you guys to have a good facility, I want it to be a right facility, but I don't wanna do something that's financially irresponsible, just so that I can leave in two or three years and y'all go, yeah, you know, Fowler did it for us. Well, he, yeah, and then the next bunch that comes in goes, ooh, how are we gonna pay for this? Well, uh, you know, Ms. Bachelor, is she here tonight? I hate to put you on the spot, but you were here at one point years ago, and was it, and correct me if I'm wrong, was it not put to you as an employee in your department back then, that you had a choice? You could either, you could either take a pay decrease, was it de- decrease or, or lose, you know, I mean, what was it back then?
She'll need to come up here. Ms. Bachelor, if you don't mind coming up here and-
And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, I just, I just, you know, this is a, this is a broad thing, it's, and it's not, it's, it's a good problem, we're trying to get things, and we're trying to build facilities, and it's good to have this debate, but let's, you know, let's not put ourselves back in a position that's not good. What was-
Um, w- when Richard Torres was here, we were told, um, either you take a pay cut or you lose positions in your department.
That was the options that they were given. That's not healthy, guys. It's not healthy. I don't wanna be responsible for that happening again. And that's all I'm trying to say is, let's make sure, have I not always preached that to you, Mr. Lane, about employees?
Yes, sir.
Okay? That's all I'm trying to tell you is, we're doing the best we can with the numbers we have, we'll get it fixed. It may not be, it may be, the election may be in May. You know, I, you know, I'm not just sitting here trying to debate with Mr. Baggett and them, but I don't see, I'm like Mr. Watkins, I don't see how May's gonna make any difference. I'm on the ballot in May, if I run. If I do, great, if I don't, great. But it's not gonna scare me to, to, it, you know, I just don't wanna show up in three or four years and come back and then say, boy, you, you know, that, those guys were irresponsible, and you know, we're up here talking, you got a room full of employees, you gotta, you're either giving them a pink slip, or you're telling them they're gonna take a pay cut. You know, that's not what I'm here to do. And if, and if it's here to just do whatever, you know, feels good at the time, I'm not your guy. I wanna be responsible, I wanna make sure, and I think that everybody on this panel wants to do that, everybody on this board, commission, whatever we wanna call it, uh, you know, that's our duty, that's our obligation. And, and, you know, we're gonna ask the tough questions. Y'all, y'all have been here before, we grill people. You know, they come up for P and Z issues, we grill them, because we're trying to make it a better environment for, not only for us, you know, we're taxpayers, we're homeowners, we, we pay these bills, you know? But we wanna make it better for our employees also. I don't think there's a person on this, and I, and I'll tell you, there's not a person in this room that wants it to be worse for any of the employees, or the residents, either one. Mr. Carmali, you lived here before, is that not correct? And why is one of the reasons that you reinvest in this community?
I wanna get back to this community. Because I had, I had a lot of support from the fire-
Can you mind, do you mind coming up? And I hate to put you guys on the spot, but-
No, no problem. Um, I had a lot of support from the Fire Department here when my dad was ill, and, I mean, literally, on a weekly basis, we'd be calling nine-one-one, and sixty seconds later, they'd show up, they'd be the first ones there. And whether it be ambulance or whoever else that came after that, the Fire Department was here. So I wanna support them, I wanna support the city, I wanna see development, I wanna see growth, I wanna see everything good for Halton City.
And you wanna make money?
Absolutely.
And there's nothing wrong with that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And have you not been grilled by the Economic Development Corporation? And when I say-
I've been through it already, yes.
You've been through it, and we ask hard questions.
Sure.
And that's the economic development, that's the city council, that's all of us. And you're back, right?
I'm sorry?
And you're back here tonight.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm here to support the, the master development.
Okay. And so that's the thing, we're, we're moving in the right direction now. How we get there, when we get there, it's a little bit of a mystery still, but it's not, it's not something that's, this is not a complete far-fetched thing. Like you said, Ms. Hudson, that's, I, I agree with you. Right. And so that, 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 you know, and that's all I'm saying, is just let's, let's all be responsible in this, let's, let's keep, let's have dialogue amongst one another, and let's develop a plan that makes sense for employees, taxpayers, residents, staff, everyone.
Are the, are there any other, uh, anyone in the audience who'd like to speak regarding this? Yes, sir, come on up, how are you? Come on up.
My name's Don Cooper, I live on Oak Knoll Drive here in Halton City. I've been here thirty-eight years, Bob.
Don Cooper?
Don Cooper, Oak Knoll Drive, here in Halton, I'm in South Halton. Um, first of all, I wanna say, I agree with you, Mr. Fowler, diversification in debate makes us stronger. I'm glad to see the healthy debate that's going on in the council. Uh, as the debate goes on and his ideas are exchanged and so forth, this encourages me. For too long, I, uh, what, few times I watched the council, it was always a rubber stamp, everybody agreed, you know, just, I even go watch the council. Uh, the health, so I commend you all that you're stepping forward and presenting what you're saying, and I thank you for that, and I appreciate that. Uh, one of the things that troubled me is I heard this one gentleman talked about how it seemed like for a period of time, we were only paying interest and nothing on principle, and that was disturbing to me. Um, the other, it, the main reason I stepped forward, though, is Mr. Groh presented an idea about the divestation of the property. Is that, and my question is, is that, is that, is that a viable reality, and can that be a part of what we're doing?
A lot of the properties that, where we're talking about, the development, that's part of it.
Okay, so that is being done or being looked at, and that's a process, it's, it's being considered?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cooper. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Well, I wanna, I wanna say a few comments here. As you can hear, many of the objections, the initial objections ha- have all been rebutted regarding the, for an example, the, uh, need for a bond committee. Well, we had that. Our, we, we, this was put on the bond, uh, proposal in two thousand and ten. Yes, it failed then, however, our need has only grown. The need for, uh, the question regarding development of the area, well, we've got two developers in the area who said that they're willing to do, you know, help us out on this. Of course, we haven't got a master agreement with, uh, Mr. Baggett, but, you know, he's one of many developers who were more than willing to come in and help us develop this area. The que- Mr. Carmali's developing up along Eight Twenty. He's redev- he's reinvesting into our community, he believes in our community. The, uh, the question regarding, is the, uh, placement of our fire station number three correct? Well, it is correct. But then we come to, well, we wanna put it on the May, the May ballot, just give us seven more months. We're gonna have it all fixed in seven months. Y'all been here enough for ten years. So my recommendation is the same as it was at the last council meeting, the time for action is now. Let's put this in the hands of the ultimate decision-makers, which are the voters. Thank you. So with that being said, uh, we're now in line for a motion, uh, Councilmember Groh.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion.
He's got it.
Yep, I got it. Yep, I got it. I, Walter Groh, Councilman, place two, make a motion that the city council adopt this bond election ordinance.
Thank you.
Do I need to put the ordinance number?
Did you put, if you would include the ordinance number?
Ordinance number Oscar dash two zero one seven dash zero one eight dash zero one for the November election.
Thank you, Councilmember Groh, we have a motion for approval for the November election. Uh, Dr. Trong?
Man, Council, I'm second.
Thank you, sir. So we have a motion for approval in a second for putting it on the November, November ballot, if you would. Councilmembers, please signify your votes. Still, motion fails by four to two. Very disappointed. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Uh, we'll call a, a five-minute recess. We'll meet back at, uh, nine o'clock. We'll meet back at, uh, nine o'clock. We got one, two, three, four? We're good, okay. Well, we'll begin, we're going back to agenda item number one, which is conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed property tax rate. Ms. Fung, welcome.
Mayor and the city council, this agenda item is the proposed fiscal year two thousand eighteen tax rate, and this is the first public hearing. And I have a presentation that will just repeat what, uh, we proposed. Okay, as you know, that our property tax value, um, as of July twenty-fifth, certified by the, uh, Terran County Apesu District, is at about one point nine six billion dollars, and which has an increase of about six point seven percent compared to the last fiscal year. And the average taxable value for the, uh, residential homes are about eighty-six point five thousand dollars, and the tax rate we propose is point four six two three two, and also the INS rate is point two three seven six three. And so altogether, um, the total tax rate is point six nine 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 nine. Okay, and then, um, we have the proposed tax rate as listed, which is, um, lower than the rollback rate of point seven two cents, and higher than the tax effective rate, that is point six three eight. So, um, this is the ordinance that we, um, this is the public hearing that we have, and I think the city manager asked me to, uh, reduce it by one penny, which will look like this. Um, if we reduce it by one penny, uh, I'm proposing to have the management and operation for point four four nine nine nine, and then the, uh, INS rate as point twenty-four, so added together is point six eight nine nine nine, which is a penny less than what, uh, the current year is. And with the property tax value of one point nine six five billion dollars, we will have the general fund will get about eight point six million dollars, and the debt service fund will get about four point six million dollars. Added together is thirteen point two million dollars, which is about almost two hundred thousand less with the penny. So, those are the two rates that is listed here. So, um, with that said, um, this is the first public hearing, and again, this is the rate that we presented. And this is the first public hearing, the second public hearing will be next Monday, and then the adoption day will be September eleventh.
Thank you, Ms. Fung. Are there any questions, uh, from the city council for Ms. Fung?
Ms. Fung?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Fung?
Oh, Dr. Trong?
I have to pick on you.
Sure.
Why, why we have to law one penny? You know the cost, hang on.
It just show you the effect.
Oh.
One penny is, uh, about two hundred thousand less for the general fund, and as you will see earlier, I have presented, uh, to the council that we, right now, is still borrowing resources from the oil and gas in order to support the general fund, since, um, the city used to have those support in order to, uh, balance the budget. The effect of reducing one penny is about two hundred thousand.
I mean, uh, the cost of living go up every day, and I don't see why. We, we keep the, the same rate, myself, you know, my feeling, we get, keep the same rate. I think everybody happy, you know, because two hundred thousand dollar for the city, like Halton City, is a big money. You know, we can do a lot of thing, we have so many road out there need to be repaired or, you know, work, and, uh, my feeling like, you know, we should keep the same rate, you know.
Yes, that's what we proposed, to keep the same rate.
Dr. Trong, let me just, I'll step in there, I was the one that asked Jennifer to kind of figure out what it would be if we dropped it a penny, and where that came from was the savings. One of the reasons we had Enterprise come tonight was just to kind of show you guys what the savings is going to be from what we thought we were going to have to spend on fleet to what we're actually going to have to spend on fleet. So, um, it wouldn't, we wouldn't have to cut anything out of the budget to cut a penny, if that makes sense. So it wasn't Jennifer that did, did that, I kind of directed her to, to prepare a Plan B and what it would look like, um, if we took the savings from Enterprise and kind of applied that to a penny decrease.
Yeah, uh, I mean, that's good for our public, know what difference between one penny. But, uh, you see, uh, for example, like police car and, uh, most vehicle we use right now, every year, you never see the price going down, only we're going up. And, uh, I feel like, you know, it is good to see how much different, but I think two hundred thousand dollars is a lot.
Thank you, Dr. Trong, uh, Councilmember Fowler.
Ms. Fung, uh, based on the, either, this is say based on the, uh, point six eight, or, or, oh, point six nine nine, if like Dr. Trong was saying, how much of a tax increase is that to the average percentage, what does that tax increase to the average homeowner?
Um, okay, since the average home is at eighty-something thousand, right, yeah? So I think it's about sixty dollars.
But, but it's about, since about six point seven percent, that's the information that we were getting earlier, is that correct?
Right.
Six point seven percent for this year, what did we increase last year, what was the percentage of increase last year?
We didn't increase anything, right?
We, that's incorrect.
It's the same, it's the same rate, right here.
Same rate, but how much of a tax increase was it to the average property owner? You seen your left end column? No, your far left column, your third column over. Third column over from the left.
Nine point five percent, that is the value.
The value or the percentage of change, so the nine and a half percent increase last year, and it's, and we're proposing a six point seven percent increase this year.
It's less increase.
Ma'am?
The increase is less?
Well.
We're not increasing as much.
But is that not correct, is that the percentage of increase for the, for the, for our?
If your home value is, um, going up, but not necessarily that every home is going up that much.
Okay, based on what we have to work off of, this property valuation and tax rates for the, this is based on the average home in Halton City, is it not?
Right, there it is.
Okay, so that's the average home in Halton City. What increase was there last year and what increase percentage wise? I see the numbers, we've corrected them on the right, but what was the?
I think the percentage is this one, if you assume that.
So, last year we raised it nine?
Because we don't change the rate, if we don't change the rate, so that will be the increase here.
Right, a nine and a half percent increase in twenty seventeen, and a proposed six point seven percent increase this year.
Right, if your home value is increased by that.
Okay.
I think your question was how much the average taxpayer is going to see increase, that's on the far right.
Right, I understand the average tax, I understand the, the dollar amount, I'm talking about the percentage.
It's nine point five, six point seven this year.
Okay, so sixteen point two percent over the last two years, if that were the case, is that correct?
That average homeowner, only if your property tax value is really increased like this.
Okay, so what is the average, what is the valuation of the average home in Halton City?
Right here, eighty-six, eighty-six thousand five hundred and fifty, last year is seventy-seven.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, these are the numbers you're telling me are the averages, so this is what we have to work on. That's the average home in Halton City for twenty eighteen, is that correct?
Yes.
And so then the average hu- home in twenty seventeen was, same home was seventy-seven thousand.
Correct.
Okay, so.
If that's the case, there is an increase of six point seven percent, which is about, uh, sixty dollars.
Say sixteen or sixty?
Sixty.
Sixty dollars, okay. Okay.
Or sixty-six.
But over the last two years, it's increased sixteen point two percent?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fowler, are there any other questions or comments from the council for Jennifer, Ms. Fung? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Fung, excellent presentation. Uh, I will, I will now open the public hearing to anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding this agenda item at, uh, let's, nine fifteen. Okay, seeing none, I'll now close the public hearing. Okay, uh, the next pu- uh, public hearing on the proposed tax rate will be conducted on August twenty-eighth, two thousand and seventeen, at city, at seven PM in the city hall, city council chambers. And that a record vote to adopt the tax rate will be conducted on September eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, at seven PM in the Halton City, city council chambers. Uh, with that being said, we are now in line for a vote. No? Okay, so there's no vote. Very simple, okay. With that being said, uh, we are now ready to adjourn at nine seventeen.